Also wanted to ask everyone's patience. Once he arrives, we need to quickly take, there he is, to take council photos. We haven't had a chance since the election for all of us to be together and be able to take council photos. And we have a photographer, so please be patient with us a moment. We're going to get that done.
Councilwoman Bravo?
Here.
Councilman Behat?
Here.
Councilman Vasquez?
Here.
There is a quorum present.
Hey, we ask if you're able to rise, please, and join us in the invocation by Councilman Vasquez.
Good evening, everyone. Before I go into my opening prayer, I'd like to extend our condolences to our Miami Springs Police Department Chief Amando Guzman, whose mom passed away this morning. Please keep them in your prayers. Heavenly Father, we gather here in your presence to ask that you provide us with the wisdom and the peace needed as we conduct the business of our beloved city. Lord, nourish us with your guidance so that we act in a thoughtful manner, with an open mind, and a sense of fairness for all as we deliberate a host of ideas in the name of the residents of Miami Springs. Guide us, dear God, to have the courage and determination to do right by all. In your name, we pray. Amen.
Amen. Okay, and now we'd like to ask troop, Girl Scout troop two, five, six, four, to come up and lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Face it, girls, face the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you, girls.
Welcome, everyone, to our June 29 meeting. It's nice to see so many people in the audience. And for those of you that are joining us virtually, thanks for being here with us. I wanted to, before we get started, I wanted to ask the council's consent to move item 12D up to the front under Awards and Presentations.
Sure.
So we don't have to make the ladies from the women's club wait. Okay. So let's get started with our awards and presentations. And Erica, do we have Representative?
They confirmed. I spoke to Bethany earlier today. Representative Rizzo was going to be here.
And I know Senator Avila, I think, is out of town, but his...
Okay.
I'm not sure.
He was confirmed for tonight, so.
Okay, well, we'll see. We have our honorable Senator Brian Avila and Representative Alex Rizzo, who, if they show up, will take a break and let them speak. Our next agenda item is recognizing the Miami Springs Little League AU Miami Springs Coach Pitch All-Star Team that won the 2023 Little League Florida District Eight Coach Pitch Championship. And we have them here. Come on up while you're speaking.
Yeah, I just want to tell you a little bit.
And line up right here.
Boys, you can go ahead and stand up at the front.
Yeah.
So as they get up there.
See that? They are well coached. Until he said, until he made the request, they didn't move.
So Mayor and Council, thank you for having us again, honoring a truly remarkable group of players and coaches and parents who accomplished something for the first time in the history of Miami Springs Little League. This group of all-stars in front of you from our 2023 regular season worked together and in a few weeks won the District Eight Coach Pitch Championship for boys and girls ages eight and under. Playing against a field that included Doral, Homestead, Upper Keys, Plantation, and North Miami Beach, they went three and one in the tournament and in the championship game left little doubt who was best with a 16-6 knockout win. Their title was like a jumpstart for our program. It is the first of five that we have won this month between baseball and softball. But this is a special group for more reasons than what they did on the field. Eight of the 12 players live in Miami Springs or Virginia Gardens. Seven of the 12 players attend school in Miami Springs. When rain rolled in and canceled practices, this group got resourceful, finding locations nearby to get a workout in, one time at the high school field with permission, of course. When rains threatened on a Sunday morning game, two coaches jumped in and helped push water out of the dugouts and even vacuumed some water off the field before our Great Parks team took it from there. And when weather really threatened the completion of the tournament, these parents made some calls, pulled some strings, and we were able to break in that new million-dollar turf field over at Virginia Gardens for a pair of games, including the decisive finale. So we learned quickly there will never be a rainout at VG. So this team is more than just talented players. They are more than just some of the most dedicated and positive coaches that I've come across in my six years as president of the league. They are the best of our two communities, Miami Springs and Virginia Gardens. They are a special group of families that know this is just the beginning of a baseball journey where they will represent their communities with pride and have plenty of fun and success along the way. We are very proud of our Miami Springs District Eight Coach Pitch Champions, and I know you are too. So thank you to all the players who are up here, the families and the coaches who are here today. And again, we thank you, Mayor and Council, for taking the time to recognize their accomplishment.
Thank you so much.
Get the coaches to come up as well. That'd be great.
Well, we have tickets for each of the players, so we're going to go in the front and take a photo with the council and call out their names. Us as your parents are proud of you and you're proud of your accomplishments and want you to know that you've made us and your city of Miami Springs very, very proud. So thank you so much.
Do you want to just read them off of here?
Okay. Okay, we'll start. The first certificate goes to Adam Barron. Next is Matthew Carvahal. Ethan Mutu. Darren Tamargo. I don't think he's here, but Daniel Mendoza, not here. Shane Dino. Johnny Arietta. Matthew Sejas. Dominic Delgado. Noah Perez. Jaden Fiero. And last but not least, Adam Iglesias. And coaches are Pedro Perez and Pedro Perez Jr., Romi Sejas, Darren Tamargo, Miguel Iglesias, Eugene Delgado, and Eric Arietta.
Thank you. And I want to, all of us on the council, really want to express our appreciation to the coaches and the parents. You're the ones that make it possible for these young men to be champions for our community. So thank you for all your efforts. I know some nights are really, really difficult and you make it happen. So thanks again. Okay, this is really exciting. Tonight, we have a visit from our very honorable Senator Brian Avila and our very honorable State Representative Alex Rizzo. So this is really a double treat for us tonight to have them both visit us. Senator and representative, would you like to say some words?
There we go. Well, first and foremost, thank you all for having us here, to the council, to the mayor, to the residents, for having us here. Myself and Representative Rizzo, you know, wanted to come and just give you an update as to what occurred. Certainly, this past legislative session, which, I mean, was a historic session, especially in terms of funding and the budget. And so, you know, we wanted to make sure that we communicated to the council, to the mayor, and certainly to our residents, the work that we did in Tallahassee.
Please, Scott, you're doing so well.
So this past, this past session, we passed a budget that was over $116 billion. And it's a historic budget, as I mentioned before, certainly the largest budget to date. Now, it shouldn't come to that much of a surprise because we've seen a lot of population growth in the state of Florida. Certainly, we've seen a lot of revenues come into the state, you know, on a daily basis. We have anywhere from 1,000 to 1,200 residents from other states that are moving to the state of Florida. That's each and every day. So obviously, with that migration to the great state of Florida, certainly comes along with it a lot of capital and certainly a lot of revenue is generated from the economic activity that these individuals coming to live here, certainly coming to start a business or coming here to certainly, you know, make sure that they are doing the best that they can for their families. They're certainly, you know, along with the residents of the state of Florida, they're adding to just a great economic prosperity that we've enjoyed certainly for some time. So with the budget, with the budget, there were, there was historic K through 12 funding, which was $26.8 billion, which is a record for the state of Florida. That's the most that we've seen, certainly in our time and certainly in the state of Florida's history. And that equates to per student, also a record high of $8,648,000 per student, which is, again, another record for the state of Florida. You also saw a record tax relief package or tax cut package totaling $2.7 billion. You know, in my time and certainly Representative Rizzo's time in the Florida Legislature, this is by far the biggest tax cut and tax relief that has been provided to the residents of the great state of Florida. And, you know, with that, there were certainly other achievements here. There were, there was $635 million, which is for workforce education funding. Again, that's another record in order to certainly train up our workforce to make sure that we continue that economic trajectory and making sure that our economy is one of the strongest in the world. For those that might not know, the state of Florida right now, if it were a country, it would be the 15th largest economy in the world.
That's amazing.
Our GDP is over a trillion dollars. So it is clearly one of the biggest economies in the world, certainly in the United States, and it's only going to continue to grow. We also had a record workforce and affordable housing. Certainly, we know that in our community, housing and the cost of living has gone up significantly. And in large part, you know, certainly that comes along with a lot of residents from other states moving to our area. And, you know, it's increased the, certainly the cost of living. So through our work and certainly the governor's leadership, there was record funding going towards affordable housing, which totaled $711 million. And again, that's, that's a record for the state of Florida. We also made sure to have $4 billion in our budget for moving Florida forward. So those are essentially economic tools to continue the momentum that we've enjoyed and that we continue to see in terms of the prosperity that is, you know, taking hold in our state. On the environmental front, we invested $1.6 billion into the Everglades restoration effort as well as water quality. Again, for us in our community, water is immensely important as well as, you know, having the Everglades and protecting the Everglades, which is a one, you know, a very unique environment and a very unique set of habitats. And, you know, that's what makes our community so special that we have the Everglades as well as Biscayne Bay, which is the largest estuary in the state. So we put a lot of funding into making sure that those two entities, as well as water quality within our community, is the best that it can possibly be. And lastly, just wanted to touch on, touch on a, a historic number. Certainly for new and veteran teachers, we invested $1.1 billion in raises for new and veteran teachers and instructional personnel. Again, reaffirming our commitment to education, making sure that we are certainly prioritizing our teachers that, I mean, they really are, you know, Representative Rizzo can certainly speak to this as well as myself being in the classroom. I know some of, some of y'all are educators as well. You know, there is absolutely, you know, nothing that can quantify the effect that a teacher has for our families. So we wanted to make sure that we did our best to make sure how much, to ensure that we appreciate or that the teachers know how much we appreciate their effort throughout the entire school year and their impact on our families. So we invested $1.1 billion into that initiative. And lastly, we also invested $191 million in cancer research and care. We're certainly seeing an uptick in terms of cancer, you know, with our residents, not just here in our community, but throughout the entire state. And we wanted to make sure that we took a proactive approach to really help those individuals that are going through the treatment as well as their families. So all in all, this was, again, a very historic session. Certainly, Representative Rizzo, myself, you know, I'll let him speak to this. We, we, I mean, fought tooth and nail for all the resources for our areas, our municipalities, including Miami Springs. And I'll let him, you know, touch on that.
Thank you, Senator. So thank you, everyone, for having us here. And once again, it's, it's an honor to represent Miami Springs and its surrounding areas. The center was, was... was, was quite right, and, and I think actually was, was very low key on, on what kind of a year it was, especially for education. It was an historic year. This is the, the greatest increase for public education ever in the state of Florida, ever. I started teaching in 1995 in a public school, and I could tell you that, you know, a 2%, a 3% increase was, was something significant, that would, that would come out to basically $150, $200. This was, everyone was a little different, but basically, it's over $500, $600 per student. That equates, in Miami-Dade, to about $1 billion. That is, we are the third-largest school district in America. And, and so you can imagine. Now, with that, we also were able to, through the leadership of, of Senator Avila, and, and me just doing a little bit of lifting in the House, we were able to change the formula, the way that public schools are funded. And basically, at the end of the day, all 67 superintendents signed off that they were totally satisfied with the way that this new funding structure benefits everyone. There was a winner. There was not one single district in Florida that lost. Every single one came out significantly impacted better. And, and also, the way that the rules were changed, in Miami-Dade, you know that we've had a great influx of students that come from other countries. As of two, three months ago, it was about 30,000 students that had come in new in the last two years to our public schools here in, in the county. And that brought great cost. We were able to, and again, working on both sides of the campus up there, we were able to help change that, so that those categorical funds that only go to that were, were basically, the limits were taken off. Okay? So, it, it was a win-win all around. It was a win for choice. It was a win for public schools. It was a win for teachers. Once again, it's a significant increase. We also were able to do something, and anyone who's a public school teacher, or has heard of this, we've dealt with the compression issue as well. A few years ago, when we brought up, when the governor, and then Speaker Oliva, and Speaker Corcoran, when they had brought up the beginning teacher salaries, the teachers that were at the upper end of the scale were compressed. There wasn't really an increase for them, and districts basically were, were left alone to kind of figure it out. We were able to do something where now we will see that compression kind of diminishing go away. And the governor specifically wanted, and, and the Speaker of the House and the President of the Senate both put in $800 million to go directly to teacher supplements, to teacher pay. Okay? That goes above and beyond the $2 billion that was put into the K through 12 funding. Some other points, like Senator said, cancer research. We were very proud to carry a $2 million appropriation for the University of Miami, that goes to cancer research, specifically to first responders, specifically to our firefighters, that we see have a very high correlation of, of cancer as they move forward in their careers. And so, we're very proud to do that. We're very proud to bring back almost $1 million for elderly meals that go directly to Miami Springs and Virginia Gardens here at the, at the recreation center. We, hopefully, we will get invited to the ribbon cutting, where the groundbreaking for the, for the war memorial here in Miami Springs, that, that we were very proud to carry. There were a few projects that didn't make it. We're gonna revisit those. We're gonna come back. Canal stabilization is one of them. But, one of the other things that I want you to know is that in the surrounding areas of Miami, of Hialeah, Virginia Gardens, and especially on the other side of, of the airport, we have a lot of different projects that went in and were approved for drainage, road improvement. So, even though it may not be right here in the city of Miami Springs, its impact will be felt all around us. And so, that was something that, that actually Senator Avila and I are, it's, it's humbling, because we actually, you know, when the, when the governor comes out with his veto pen, we weren't at the top of the list for the vetoes. We were actually down quite low. And so, you know, it's nothing to, you don't sit on your laurels. You always want to do better. We pledge ourselves to do better. We work very, very closely together, and we, we protect our district, and we defend it, you would say, like we do our children. And so, with that, again, it's, 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 it's humbling to sit here and to stand here before you all, to thank you, to tell you about what kind of a, a session that we had. We anticipate we will have a, another historic, you know, session coming up next year. I would imagine that our budget probably will continue, as, as the Senator said, to reflect the growth that we've had. We have a lot of things that we're gonna look at. We're still continuing to tackle the property insurance monster that we have, and it's taken about 30 years to get here, and it's gonna take a little while to kind of stabilize things, but we've started to put things in place to stabilize those things. We did something that I don't think any legislature has ever done, and that is tort reform. That is meaningful tort reform. And, and I think we'll start seeing some of those things. When it came to the tax package, again, the largest tax package, that puts money back in the pockets of citizens. Some things have been made permanent. Some baby items, for example, newborn items have been placed permanently on a tax-free status. We have tax-free holidays. We have two different summer holidays. We have, obviously, we have the one starting at the beginning of the hurricane season. But we also have, for example, for pets, we have a tax-free holiday there as well. So, there's a lot of things that we've done, a lot of things that we continue to work on. We shall do that. We, we, we obviously need input from everyone on a, on a very local level. All politics is local. And so, you know, please take advantage that we are there to serve everyone here, everyone in the city proudly and humbly. So, thank you very much.
And I would, I would just like to also add, you know, I've had, I've had the pleasure of working with Representative Rizzo, as well as with, well, now Commissioner of Education Manny Diaz Jr., who was our state senator. And I've had, I, I mean, I've, I've really enjoyed working with them, because, I mean, we're, we're all aligned in terms of our goals, right? We, we want to make sure that we bring back as much as possible back to our area, right? You know, we, we certainly, our residents certainly give and contribute, certainly to, you know, to the state of Florida. So, we want to make sure that some of those dollars are, are actually, the majority of those dollars are, are coming back to our area. And so, you know, just to certainly quantify the work that we've done, again, myself, Representative Rizzo, now Commissioner of Education Manny Diaz Jr., over a nine-year span, the city of Miami Springs has received over $9.5 million in state funding.
That's amazing.
So, you know, some of, some of the highlights, and for the residents, some of the highlights of where that funding has gone, and, and what, you know, those dollars are dedicated to. Some of those highlights certainly include our, our senior meals for, for the elderly. But also, we have Royal Pointiana, right, which I believe right now, you're, you're seeing work-
Under construction.
-under construction. You also will see South Drive be completely, you know, just redone completely. East Drive is another one. You also have funding for the senior center itself, for the construction of it. That was about $1 million, or close to it. So, you, you, there you also have the first phase of, of the erosion control, and, and the stabilization, the stabilization of drainage canals, which are certainly important for those property owners that are along those banks, and making sure that, you know, those, that entire area is safe, and making sure that the water is, is certainly up to, up to quality standards. So, that's where those dollars have gone. I, I think I'm safe to say that myself and Representative Rizzo will continue to certainly advocate for our community, and for the residents of Miami Springs, and for the council and the mayor, to make sure that we continue to bring back that funding that is so critical for our community. Again, $9.5 million over a nine-year span. I can certainly tell you, and I think Representative Rizzo would agree, there are not a lot of communities, especially of this size, that receive anywhere near that amount. If anything, over a decade span, a community of this size in other parts of the state would probably receive maybe $2 million or less. So, for this community, in a nine-year span, to receive over $9.5 million is absolutely historic. And it's, it's certainly a testament to working with you, the council and the mayor, us knowing what your vision is, and us making sure that we deliver for the residents, and making sure that the quality of life in Miami, in Miami Springs continues to be high. So, just wanted to thank all of you, and wanted to make sure that the residents knew what those dollars actually meant, and what you're going to be seeing this year and next year in terms of those projects with regards to state funding.
Thank you so much. Senator and, and Representative, I just wanted to add to that, that I know, in the time that I've been on the council, your accessibility, you're working for us. I don't think residents realize how hard you work for us up in Tallahassee. It's, you know, there are all these senators and congressmen up there, and each of them want a part of the pie for their communities. And what you said is true. Our community, I know last year, when the governor vetoed a lot of items, all of, I mean, some municipalities got nothing after the governor's veto pen, and we have our three projects that, you know, major projects for flood control on East Drive, and road improvements on, on South Royal Pointiana and Oakwood. So, it was amazing that we got so many things, that, not just that you worked hard to get there, but your representation of our community ensured that the governor didn't veto them, and that we got them. And we're very, very grateful. And I want the, the residents to know how, how hard Senator Avila and Representative Rizzo worked for us up in Tallahassee, but also to know that when they're saying to reach out to them, they really are genuinely sincere. I know I reach out to them a lot to, to discuss needs that we have for our community, find out ways, you know, perhaps it's not within their purview, but just to get their guidance on certain things. And they're just a wealth of knowledge and caring for our community, and we greatly appreciate that. So, thank you, and Councilman.
Yes. So, and I just wanted to, to add to that, because, and Representative Rizzo was right, the adage is that all politics are local, but it strikes me that you guys are working locally. You're, you're, you're thinking and working locally and globally at the same time. You know, you, you go up there, and it's not, it's not easy to find consensus, and to find common ground, and to get people to compromise, and to get things done. And numerous things that you guys talked about benefit everybody in the entire state of Florida. Like, it's, it, these are huge accomplishments that you guys play a, a large role in, in doing, while at the same time being fiercely, like fiercely advocating for us locally. You are one of us that go up there, and you advocate for us, in, in terms of appropriations, and fight for us. And we're very, very proud of your service, and, and thank you to both of you.
Very grateful. And for the work that you're doing with the environment, with the Biscayne Bay, you know, which is just critical. I mean, Biscayne Bay is our lifeline for the whole South Florida community. So, thank you so much.
Through the truth.
Yes, sir.
Yes. First of all, thank you, gentlemen, for the work that you do on behalf of us. We are proud of the work you guys do. You know, as you know, I'm not only a sitting councilman, voted in by the, the voters of Miami Springs, but I'm also a veteran. And I also wear a hat as the president of the Miami Springs War Memorial, that we've been working on, with our former councilman Bob Best sitting back there. And when we got the news about the appropriation, we were ecstatic, because it put us over the top in terms of accomplishing this project. So, there may be a groundbreaking on Veterans Day. Thanks to, thanks to you, gentlemen. And I'm also humble and honored that, and pleased that the city of Miami Springs celebrates its veterans. Our Veterans Day and Memorial Day events are excellent. The turnout is wonderful. The support of the city for the event, the staff, and the Girl Scouts and the Boy Scouts are a reminder to us of who we are. And it's good to see the Scouts out, because they are gonna be adults, and they're gonna carry this on. And so, I want to take a moment to give you each a brochure on the memorial. If you want to get a brick and, you know-
We'll go and take a photo.
For them? Yes. 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 And so, the plan is, right now, is to finalize the design of, of the, of the monument. As you know, it's a refurbishment, so we're not tearing down. We're gonna build out from there. And also, we're going to expand a little bit on it, because the brick sales have been great, and, and we can buy a bench. You can get a bench, and, and other organizations, like the, right, like Alliance Club and others that have been so great in supporting this effort. So, we hope to get that design done soon, so that hopefully, on Veterans Day, we have a groundbreaking ceremony. We can, we can move, and, and the designer will tell us this, when we meet, we may actually have a ribbon-cutting ceremony on Memorial Day 2024. So, thank you again for your efforts. The veterans in this community, thank you. And I know the community at large is gonna thank you when we finally complete this project. Thank you very much.
I just also, I don't, I just wanted to, for the record, say thank you to Senator Avila and Representative Rizzo. I feel very proud that you represent Miami Springs. I'm very, I feel very confident, as a councilwoman, to, you know, help support our community. And I really just feel that your loyalty has shown throughout, and it hasn't changed, and it just gets better. So, thank you for bringing back the money to our community, but also just, and overall, your diligence has been exceptional. And I really look forward to continuing to work with you, and seeing what your future holds, because you both as public servants have been outstanding. And I think it's very rare that you have people that come into public service, and the mission sees clear and north. So, just thank you for your service, and I'll have to say-
Thank you. Might as well be the last one to say something.
Yes, sir. Well, okay.
On the newbie here, but, and I'll be honest, I, obviously, when I've been the other side of the day, is I've taken stuff for granted, what you guys do. And, you know, you think that, as a resident, you're like, state just throwing money everywhere, and easily, everybody's getting it, right? But the truth is, now being on this side, it's not the truth. It's hard, and we are fortunate to get the money that we get from you guys, and the effort that you guys are doing up there in Tallahassee. So, I appreciate it.
Definitely, for Senator Avila and Representative Rizzo, I can tell you that their constituents are their number-one priority. And as, as Councilwoman said, we're very, very lucky to have them representing us, because that is their priority to, to do the best for their constituents. Thank you.
And Senator Avila is our neighbor.
Nothing, nothing, Alex, nothing.
We're very lucky.
You're always welcome to move into Miami Springs.
Senator Avila is Miami Springs resident, and Representative Rizzo is going to be a Miami Springs resident one day. He told me. He promised me.
I'm a proud Golden Hawk, and also a proud resident of the city of Miami Springs.
And, and I, and I thank you, thank you for the indulgence. There, there was one thing, one piece of legislation that, that the Senator and I carried, that we're very, very proud of, that, that affects everyone in the state of Florida. It was an education package. And it was sweeping. We had about 40 amendments to it, being added on. And, and finally, the last week, it passed, I think, it passed unanimously in the House, and unanimously in the Senate. So, imagine that this is, this is a big piece of legislation, yes. And I think it's a testament to Senator Avila's leadership. All I did was just, you know, block for him, and kind of like, you know, do the things that I had to do, like on a football team. But one of the, one of the greatest things that this, that this piece of legislation does, it does things where it, where it makes it easier for teachers to get certification. It extended initial certification to teachers to five years, instead of three years, to basically deal with our crisis, you know, with our personnel crisis, and teaching, and things like that. It dealt with a lot of different things. But the, the biggest piece, and it's something that everyone of school-age children especially can benefit from. of school age children especially can benefit from. It created a whole new dual enrollment package. I think everyone knows what dual enrollment is, right? And, and, and this created a, will create an entirely new dual enrollment program that is totally aligned to the college, state, to the Florida State College and University system. So what happens right now, say you, you're in dual enrollment with Doral College and you want to go to the University of Florida, University of Florida will say, okay, you graduated sixty credits with an A.A. We're going to accept forty or forty-two of those credits. They don't accept all of them. This new dual enrollment program, every state college, every state university in this, in this state, and they are, and the Department of Education on the leadership of Commissioner Diaz is also working to get reciprocity agreements with other states around the Southeast, every single credit will be transferable. So that when a student graduates high school with forty credits, sixty credits, seventy credits, fifty credits, every single one of those credits will be accepted at our colleges and universities here in the state of Florida. So that is a huge accomplishment, a major time saver and a major saver of funds to families everywhere in the state of Florida. I'm very proud that I carried it along with Senator Avila. And once again, it's something when you get a hundred and twenty representatives and forty senators to vote yes on the same piece of legislation and we were able to do that.
Thank you again both so much for being here. Really is an honor for us to have you here and to, and to give us such a summary of everything that's happened in Tallahassee at this legislative session.
I wish they were around. Those going to school could save so much money.
Okay, our next agenda item is we have to introduce our new Miami Springs Middle School principal and Councilman Vasquez, I'll let you introduce him since he's a friend of yours.
Good evening. Good evening and thank you, Mayor. Mr. Saavedra, come on up. Chris Saavedra is the new principal of Miami Springs Middle School who comes to us with a wealth of experience. And after hearing the representative and Senator talk, some money. His eyes are going like this. I've known, it's a pleasure to introduce him because I've known Chris for about ten years. He was assistant principal at Miami Jackson Senior High School when I was dean at Miami Dade College. And we did a number of projects over the years of faculty to faculty training. What that meant was we bring all of the faculty from Miami Jackson Senior High School to Wolfson Campus. And we would have these workshops and meetings. So the math teachers met with the math professors and science teachers with the science professors and they exchanged ideas so that the high school teachers knew what, what was the expectation in the different disciplines of the students graduating and also for the professors to understand what it was that the teachers were doing in these disciplines in the high schools. And we did that a number of times. And I haven't seen him in a while. In fact, I was, I served on the ESAC two years at Miami Jackson Senior High School, representing the college. And full disclosure, I was a principal for a day when Carlos Rios was the principal. So when he called me and told me he was coming, Miami Springs, I said, you gotta come. We gotta bring, introduce you to the city, to, as, as, as principal of Miami Springs Middle School from where my daughter Sophia graduated from. So Chris, welcome on behalf of all of us. Welcome. Say a few words.
Thank you. Mayor and members of the council, thank you Victor. One of the first things when I received that phone call saying that I was the newly appointed principal of Miami Springs Middle School, it was just pure excitement. I myself was never a resident of the city of Miami Springs, but I did attend Miami Springs Middle School thirty-seven years ago. I did go through the system. I did attend ninth and tenth grade Miami Springs Senior High. So I know the value and the core values of the city of Miami Springs. So one of the first things that I wanted to do was I needed to make myself known within the city to its residents to understand that my goal in Miami Springs is just to make your middle school that's been around for many, many years, the beacon of the city. I understand that in years past, it might not have necessarily had the best reputation, but one of my first goal is to make sure that, that, that school and that campus is open, welcoming to its residents to understand that this is their school. And my job is to make sure to continue the great work that Ms. Valero, the previous principal started with the staff and the faculty there. And my ultimate goal is to make sure that every student that walks those halls gets the best education and that, and based on the information given to us by our state representative and our senate, the right things are being put in place to make sure that that happens. Because that is one of the biggest challenges that we have as educators, as administrators, is making sure how are we going to be able to fund these, these projects? You know, these things that at the end of the day, it's nothing but to help the kids. So thank you again. I look forward to being part of this great city. My intentions is not to go anywhere anytime soon. I hope to be at the principal of Miami Springs Middle School for many, many years. I look forward to meeting the residents. Please feel free, stop by. I have an open door policy. If you just want to stop by, even if you don't have any children and you want to just stop by to say hi, please, I welcome. So thank you so much.
Thank you.
Principal, we have, thank you so much for being here. It's, it really is wonderful to meet you and, and we share a common goal. You know, we want our schools, all of our public schools. I've always said, you know, communities get identified by their quality of their public schools. So whether you have children in school or not, it's really important for us to have top quality schools. And ultimately, we're the benefactors, the community is, because these are the people that are going to be our future leaders and our future workers and, you know, and live in our communities. So thank you for having that vision of making Miami Springs Middle School the best middle school. And I'm going to go a little further. I don't know if you went that far, the best middle school in Miami Dade County. Anything that we can do here from, you know, the council, we're available to you. I do also want to ask, invite you to attend our educational advisory board. We have an educational advisory board and Eric, our city clerk, can get your, reach out to you later and get your information and let you know when the meetings are. They meet twice in the fall and twice in the spring. So again, thank you so much and we'd like to take a photo with you. We, somehow we need to figure out a tunnel. Okay, our next agenda item is the Yard of the Month Award. They are not here. They're not here. Okay, so we do have a certificate for our Yard of the Month Award. If our residents don't know, our parks board once a month selects a yard. They, the members drive around and make a selection of nominate a yard of the month. And so this month it is for the De Souza family at one eight nine Palmetto Drive. And we'll get the certificate to them. I want to thank them, even if they're not here, for beautifying Miami Springs. And I want to encourage our residents, if you get a chance, drive by and check out their yard because we're very, very grateful to them for not just beautifying their yard and the neighborhood, but also giving a lot of us inspiration on things we can do for our yard. Okay, so next we'll move to, I want to, we moved up the item twelve D, which is a report from, I'm sorry, not a report, a request from our esteemed women's club. Is Suzanne here? Millie, you're going to speak for her. Okay. Millie and Eileen, hi, come on up. So this is not open forum. This is actually an agenda item so we can ask them questions.
Thank you. My name is Eileen McDonough and I'm the current president of the Miami Springs Women's Club. And I want to tell you about women's clubs. Our women's club in Miami Springs was founded in nineteen thirty-nine and it's been doing good works in the community since that time. And we offer programs and we fundraise for money for charity. That's what we try to do. We look for good causes and we try to fund them. And I'd like to, on behalf of the women's club, thank the council very much for all of your support. Our latest fundraiser was called Jail and Bail. And most of you on the council volunteered to be arrested.
Guilty.
For charity. And we thank you for that. To date, we have raised thirteen thousand one hundred and sixty-five dollars and we still have four days to go. Yes. Since I'm the new president, I asked that the charity that we would try to raise funds for are two local children's cancer foundations. One is Chad Tough and the other is the Sebastian Strong Foundation. So some of the proceeds of this fundraiser will go to that. Now you probably know us in the community for a bunch of witches wandering around the community. And I know a couple of years ago, you were assaulted by about thirty of our members dressed up in witches costumes coming to ask you for your help. So we're sort of back asking for your help again. We're home of the Family Friendly Witches of Westward fundraiser event, which has become a staple in our community. And drawing on its success this year, we want to bring in another exciting community event fundraiser, the Miami Springs Witches Ride for Charity. And there are sixteen other women's clubs in different locales in the state of Florida that sponsor a witches ride. And there are seventy-five nationwide. So we would like to add Miami Springs to this event on October the seventh. And Millie is here to talk to you about what we may need from help with the city council. Thank you.
Thank you. It's an honor to be here and thank you again for allowing us to arrest you.
A little higher.
A little taller than I mean. So you guys have it in front of you. The Witches Ride for Charity is basically a whimsical Halloween themed bike ride through the streets of Miami Springs. The community attendees will decorate their brooms, and their golf carts dressed up and toss candy to little monsters on the road. It'll start in the circle and finish in the circle. And like Eileen said, right now we have sixteen witches rides in Florida. And you see there, they go from Key Largo to Pensacola, Palencia. Delray Beach is one of the biggest ones. And hopefully we can add the Miami Springs Witches Ride, powered by the Witches of Westward to this list, over seventy-five nationwide. So the next page is the route. We will work, this is just a suggestion, obviously work in progress. We'll work with the council and we'll work with the police department to make sure that we're doing it right. The event will start from eight thirty to nine forty-five at the circle with registration. Nine forty-five, the witches will line up and ten o'clock, we fly. The route will start at the Curtis Circle down Westward Drive, left on Esplanade Drive, left on Deer Run, all the way to Fairway Drive, so all around the golf course. And then right on Eldred Drive, right on Curtis Parkway, through Curtis Parkway and finish at the circle. So the after-party will be from ten thirty to about one P.M., where we hope to have live music, contests for the best decked out bicycle or broom, golf cart and costumes. Also shopping and food we will have in the circle. You see some pictures there of the different rides across Florida. So we're here to ask you for permission and work with you to see if, one, we could make this happen for the community and two, make steps, what can we do to fly our brooms across town?
Millie, let me ask you, what are you asking for as far as I see the route? But were you asking for a closure of anything in particular for the party, the after-party? Or just for the police to close this?
So we're thinking about three hundred people. Well, we're going to put a cap of five hundred. But these events usually have a lot of riders. We have golf carts, so hopefully close the area from eight thirty to, well, ten thirty, while the bikes are getting ready. People are coming into the circle to register everybody. And then, you know, once people, once they head out, obviously you can open the circle again, but make sure that our riders are safe throughout this route. So closing as they go through. And then once they start coming back in, hopefully close that area again until one o'clock.
Mayor, I have a question.
Yes, go ahead.
Then has the chief looked at this? Have you guys sat down to talk to the chief about this plan?
We're, I believe Suzanne has made them aware, but first we wanted to see if it's even possible and they would definitely work with the chief and we have to change the project, you know, the route.
Right.
We will do whatever it takes.
Yeah, I mean, just.
What we need is consensus from us to ask the chief to work with her and figure out something that'll work.
Sure.
We want to make sure we don't disrupt offices, businesses and things like that, but we really want this. I mean, we've seen what these bike rides do for communities across Florida and they really have a huge impact. It becomes like, again, another staple for the community. And that's where our goal is to create these family friendly community experiences that have a goal, you know, it's money for charity. And we could fund a lot of scholarships and do a lot of good, social good in our community with these kinds of fundraisers.
So Mayor, can, can we get consensus for, for the city, interim city manager and the chief?
Yes, to work with you and discuss the possibilities, but we have the date. We know that the date that you'd like to have it and you're generally talking about in the morning to early afternoon. So is everyone okay with that? All right. Tammy, will you work with her?
Absolutely.
With, with the women's club, with the witches of Westward? You look so normal when you're out of, you know. Right, we're right, y'all look like, you could, you fit in with the rest of us so well. Nobody would ever know.
That's what we try to do.
Yes, I know, until, until October. And I just wanted to say, and I know, well, the women's club, for those of you that, you know, we're very, very blessed, and I always say this in Miami Springs, that we have such wonderful, active, busy, but just full civic clubs. The Rotary Club, the Lions Club, the Optimist Club, the Scouts and, and the Women's Club, the Miami Springs Women's Club. And if there are any ladies out there that are listening that, you know, want to make some lifelong friends, having fun and you do what you like to do only, you're never required, that's my favorite. Please just, and believe me, once you walk through the doors of the women's club, you will become, you will feel, right, Millie?
Yes, you will.
Right away, you are a member and you are a friend. There is nothing, you know, it's like they just embrace you.
We do a lot of magic.
And I know councilwoman Bravo and I are both members and two of our council members are married. Their wives are members of the women's club.
I had is married to a wonderful witch as well. Thank you guys.
Thank you again. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so next we move to open forum. We have some people signed up for open forum. And before we get started with that, I'll call up your names to speak. I just want to make some brief comments to remind everyone about open forum. The purpose of open forum is for whoever signed up to speak to have the opportunity to address all of the council members at once and have it, you know, memorialized and the, you know, for those at home, for those here. But it is literally a one-way communication where you speak to us, we don't respond because it's not on the agenda. So we're listening, we're all ears. You're welcome afterwards to reach out to any of us individually or we will reach out to you if we have questions. And also to follow up, if you have any questions as to, if you've asked for something, you can follow up later with our city manager or Tammy and, and ask what the next step would be, okay? We also ask, because it's not an agenda item, that you keep your public forum to two minutes. Okay, your public forum speech. So first on the agenda is Connie Rodriguez.
So good evening, council and members of Miami Springs. So my name is Connie Rodriguez.
So my name is Connie Rodriguez, and I am the Girl Scout troop leader for 2564. And I'm coming to simply ask if you would like, if you could sponsor part of our trip for going to Girl Scout convention. Thankfully, it's in Orlando, Florida, so we're able to make it. It got postponed because of COVID. And so one of our Girl Scouts, you might have recognized her at MyLum, she was here tonight. She earned, as one of them, sent us a ticket to Girl Scout convention. So all of us would like to honor her and go with her and be, you know, celebrate this win. But, but unfortunately, without some of your help, we have one, possibly two girls that might not be able to make it due to the financial constraints. So I'm just asking for a $250 donation for our Girl Scout troop to sponsor us to go.
Thank you, Connie.
Thank you.
Okay, and we'll, later at the end, we'll discuss that and give consensus on that. Okay, the next, next on the agenda, my glasses, is Johan Hernandez. Hi, welcome.
Hi, good evening, everyone. Can you hear me? Okay. My name is Johanna Hernandez. My husband and I were residents of Miami Springs. I grew up here, graduated from Miami Springs High School. My parents live here, my grandparents live here. I became a pediatric dentist. And the reason why I'm here today is because we're trying to build a pediatric dentist office at the new building, at the Springstown Center Building. This is not just my dream of just practicing in the city where I grew up. I think this is just giving back to my community. This is just providing a service that all the kids in our city needs. This is not just about helping a developer. This is not just about business. This is giving back. I will be honored to treat my neighbors, to treat my friends, because this is who we are in the Springs. And the reason why I'm here today is just because I'm asking for you to put this in the agenda and just consider giving me your support. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next, we have Ms. Maribel Martin.
Hi, good evening, Mayor and council, Miami Springs residents. The reason I'm here tonight is, so you guys maybe could put it in your agenda. I'm also here asking for you to reconsider letting us move into the new building. I've been a citizen here for twenty years. I've been a business owner for fourteen years, which is very hard to do in Miami Springs, by the way. And I want to grow, I'm growing. I've become, I just became a med spa, just got a license for that. And I, I want to grow, and I see the opportunity to grow. And I really want you guys to reconsider, you know, that, you know, you are, you will be helping us, you know, the citizens here of Miami Springs as well. You know, it's not, you won't only be helping a developer, you'll be helping the citizens and us business owners here in Miami Springs. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Dr. Francois Sayes.
How are you guys?
Evening.
Are you citizens of Miami Springs? So I've been here for thirty years in Miami Springs, and I've raised my beautiful family here. I'm still active here, Miami Springs, I live here, I work here, and I love the city. So I have a practice down on Westward Drive. For a very long time, that practice has been, I think it's the oldest office in Dade County. Dr. Summerfield was there before me for about forty-one years. I've been there thirty years, so that's seventy-one years. So I want to stay in Miami Springs, I need to grow. And then, one day, I, I see this beautiful building going up, and I'm like, and I live down the street from the building, so I'm like, wow, this is perfect. I'm here, and then I'm trying to move in to the building, and then I think I'm moving in, and then there's a big speed bump along the way, and I don't know why, and I don't understand what's happening. But I would really like some answers to this and for this to get resolved somehow. I think it's all good for the community. It's all medical businesses going in. It's, it's the right place, the right time. And I just would really like the council board and the mayor to consider our, our agenda and our, our reasonings why we want to move into the new property. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay, and then Laura Cabrera.
Good evening, all. I'm a resident of the city, and I would like to support Dr. Hernandez as well in bringing her office into this neighborhood. I am a mom, I'm a dentist as well, and I'm a general practitioner, so I would love to have the opportunity to refer my younger patients that I'm not able to treat in my practice to her, and also have the convenience of having my own kids seen by her here in the neighborhood. So that's all I would like to say, consider this growth is benefit for everyone. We have a lot of children in this neighborhood that can benefit from having a pediatric dentist really close to us, okay?
Thank you.
Thank you so much. All right, thank you, everyone, for spoke at open forum. And that is everyone we have signed up for tonight. So we're going to move from there to approval of the council minutes of the regular meeting of June twelfth.
I want you to approve, second.
Okay, any discussion?
Call the vote, please. Vice Mayor Santin?
Yes.
Councilwoman Bravo?
Yes.
Councilman Fahad?
Yes.
Councilman Vazquez?
Yes.
Mayor Mitchell?
Yes.
The motion carries.
Thank you. We'll move to the agenda item nine, consent agenda. Is there any item that anyone wants to pull to discuss from the consent agenda? Okay, is there a motion?
Motion to approve items A, B, C, D, and E, nine, A through E.
Councilwoman Vazquez, you seconded?
Yes.
All right, any discussion? Call the vote, please.
Vice Mayor Santin?
Yes.
Councilwoman Bravo?
Yes.
Councilman Fahad?
Yes.
Councilman Vazquez?
Yes.
Mayor Mitchell?
Yes.
The motion carries.
And I just want to say on that, that I'm very happy that we're getting the cybersecurity grant. We're just approving here to the agreement for, that is, George, our IT director, has been working very hard at, you know, cybersecurity for the city, and this grant will help us further that. Okay, so now we move to a new business. And our new business is, it's very exciting. We have interviews with our four candidates for city manager. I guess it's more presentations from them. We, just for the residents to know, we spent this afternoon, all the council having private interviews with, with each of the, there, we have four. The city did an executive search, decided to go for an executive search after our highly esteemed city manager, William Alonso, retired. And our executive search firm narrowed it down to four candidates for city manager. And this afternoon, those, all of us on the city council had private interviews with each one of them. I think all of them are very promising. And so at this point, what we've asked them to do is make a presentation and give us an opportunity, if any of us have any further questions as a group, to ask the candidates. So Bill, I'm gonna let you head this off. Bill Collins is our human resources director. And I'll let you decide the order and.
So, so the, so we've suggested that you'll, you'll have the presentations from each candidate. While one candidate is speaking, the other three will be in the lobby. So we have here, if you could come up here, this is the executive search consultant, Donna Heenbottom. And she has had them each select numbers, so she's got an order.
Okay, thank you, Donna. And Donna's from the Mercer Group, which is the group that we selected to, to do the executive search for us.
Honorable Mayor, council members, it has been a pleasure working with you today. We've had a very long, busy day, and I'm so glad that you all got out of jail to attend that meeting today. I love all of your, as the Rotarians call, do-goodery that got you in jail. So keep doing what you're doing for this beautiful city. As you just mentioned, this afternoon, you met with all of the candidates, the four candidates that are finalists. And they drew names or numbers at the end of the meetings after you had all left. And our first presentation will be by Ms. Tammy Romero.
Thank you.
I'm gonna ask the other three candidates to come with me down to the lobby, and we'll bring them up one at a time.
All right, thank you. Maybe just give a moment, Tammy, for. Please, thank you. Okay.
Good evening, Mayor, council.
Evening.
It's been a long day, but I think a very successful one, I thought. I just want to let you, give you a little bit of information about myself. I was born and raised in the vibrant cities of Hialeah and Miami Springs with about, I'm at my thirty-five, excuse me, my thirty-fifth year of marriage to my high school sweetheart. And I'm a proud and dedicated mother, wife, and grandmother. I have two wonderful daughters, age thirty-two and twenty-eight. And I'm a proud grandmother of three children. Avery Lynn, who's five years old. My other granddaughter, Riley Brook, who is two. Jace Jameson, who is one. And of course, family is at the top of my priority. One of my greatest joys is entertaining my family and friends. My house, my house is often called the gathering house. I love creating warm and welcoming environments where friends and family and loved ones are able to join at my home, where we can share stories, have memories. And everybody loves to come to my house because they enjoy my frijoles that I make from scratch. When it comes to hobbies, I'm, I'm quite an adventurous, even though my body says otherwise. I love the great outdoors, I love fishing, I love camping, I love doing landscaping in my yard, and yes, even hunting with my husband. We are very active, and I have a passion for nature and exploration. Life has taught me the importance of embracing the unexpected and finding joy in every moment. I believe in cherishing relationships with family and friends. I embrace the beauty and nature and continuously enjoy learning from new experiences. And so my adventure, my new adventure should begin. Little bit more about me and my history with Miami Springs. I say that I partially grew up in Miami Springs because my grandparents lived here in this beautiful city. So I spent most of my weekends, my holidays, and my summers with them. They grew up in the nine-hundred block of Ives Avenue. I spent most of my time on the floating dock in the Bass Lake with the neighboring children. My mom and dad were both married by Pastor Schmidt at Grace Lutheran Church. And their reception was held at the King's Arthur Court in the Miami Springs Villas, in the former home of Glenn Curtis. My grandfather came to Miami Springs in nineteen forty-four, where he worked for Eastern Airlines for fourteen years, and he helped organize the personnel department. He then later retired from Wackenhut as a VP of Vice, of Wackenhut, as a VP for Labor Relations. My employment history here with the city. I began my career here in Miami Springs in two thousand and five. My tenure began with the Public Works Department as an administrative assistant. I worked my way up from administrative assistant one, two, and three. I was then promoted to the Finance Department, then the Professional Services Department, and now to the City Manager's Office as the Assistant City Manager. Over the past seventeen years, I have held positions as an Administrative Assistant, one, two, and three, the Procurement Specialist, the Professional Supervisors Manager, the Assistant City Manager, where I have evolved in all of my job duties and expanded my growth with the city. I have helped to maintain the city's budget for this current year for over twenty-eight million dollars. I have prepared, solicited, negotiated, monitored, and managed both grants and competitively sealed bid processes for several of our projects, many of which were named this evening. I have managed many storm contractors, debris monitors, and successfully collected FEMA reimbursements from Hurricanes Wilma, Katrina, and Irma. Some of the major projects that I was very much a part of was the Curtis Mansion renovation, the Community Center, the Aquatic Center, the Adult Community Senior Center, South Royal Pointiana. And I will still continue to be part of the East, East Drive Oakwood Project, the South Drive, and the Hook Square Pump Station projects. As your new city manager, I believe that I possess a wide range of qualities required to help preserve and grow our unique city and its quality of life. Brought through forth by the mayor and council through my compassion, fair and proper leadership, integrity, effective inefficient communication, strong decision-making skills, and my public engagement. Why do I feel like I'm the best fit? My commitment to the city has been almost for eighteen years. My dedication and attention to details and ease of speaking with residents. I have stronger, strong leadership skills, excellent communication skills. It'll be a seamless transition with all of our departments. And I can continue to move the city forward, working together efficiently and in a smooth and transitional manner. There will be no disruption to the day-to-day operations with our mayor, with our council, our directors, the departments, our residents, and all of our representatives. I'll continue to manage and administer, the administration, and deliver the city services and programs. I'll continue to respond to the needs of the public by proactively seeking public feedback. I'll continue to meet and address the current tasks with negotiations of contracts, budget, parking issues, zoning and ordinance needs, infrastructures and employment retention. And I will begin tackling our future opportunities of development, expansions, and renovations. With that, I thank you for your time, and I look forward to working with each and every one of you and becoming your new city manager.
Thank you, Tammy. Does the council have any questions? Okay, all right, thank you so much, Tammy. Wait, while they bring up the next candidate, and who will that be, Donna?
Mr. Christopher Russo.
Okay. Thank you.
I would personally like to thank your wonderful staff for all they did today. We had an amazing tour of this beautiful city this morning. The clerk's office provided a wonderful lunch and coordinated all of the efforts this afternoon. I wish I could remember all of their names. You have a beautiful adult center that you have much to be proud of along with everything else in this wonderful city.
Thank you. Hello, Mr. Russo.
Thank you. All right, I guess everybody can hear me like this. Okay, good evening, good evening, Mayor, council members, interim manager, and to all attendees here tonight. Thank you for this opportunity. My name is Chris Russo. I present myself as a candidate for the city of Miami Springs City Manager position. I could stand here tonight and tell you all about my work history, education, professional accomplishments, but that's not what I'm gonna do. People do not hire resumes, people hire people. Instead, my. Instead, my objective is to share with you who I am as a professional and as a leader. Professionally, I see channel, I see challenges and opportunities. I am constantly showing up when needed, but more so, I show up when not needed. I believe in establishing relationships with residents, business owners, and employees. How do I do it? I visit senior citizen centers, programs, seniors' homes even. I visit children's recreational activities as I believe that they, one day, will be the community's future home and business owners. I hold frequently senior department head meetings. I hold citywide employee town hall meetings, at least biannually, being them aware by formal communications and addressing rumors as necessary. I ensure residents feel welcome walking into City Hall as well as calling me or emailing me directly. I would be proactively get involved with the businesses by participating in the Miami Springs Airport Area Chamber of Commerce. When it comes to my relationship with the city council, I cannot promise that I can tackle every single project at the same time, especially if there is any financial budgetary restrictions. However, I believe I have the professional aptitude to prioritize projects, work with outside providers to identify funding opportunities, transparently communicate the progress of community enhancement projects in the following methods: periodic written reports to the council, presentations in council meetings, and community newsletters. I think I've seen all of those here over the past months that I've been watching. As a leader, I make tough decisions when I need to, but I prefer to gather as much information and perspectives as possible to make educated decisions. I am respectful, I am considerate, but I am also firm in my expectations for high performance. I could stand here, like many senior leaders, and tell you that my door is always open. Yes, but I do not wait for people to come to me with problems. I proactively approach my staff asking how they are doing personally, professionally, and what they may, what they need from me to help them be more effective in their roles. My subordinates have described me as a supportive in their professional growth while simultaneously challenging them to take on new tasks. I am a pro-public safety city manager, police, fire, rescue, I'm very strong on this. I hold all our responders in very high regard, and I look forward to working with the union leaders to ensure our law enforcement feels supported and valued. I would be present at city functions and community events. If selected for this position, I would not try to bring in my own staff. On the contrary, I would work with existing staff. I would identify individuals that have the capability for future growth with the city, and I did need to make a tough decision. I always provide employees multiple opportunities to improve. In closing, I have over thirty years of experience as a city manager. I am a dedicated and loyal employee. I am a team-oriented leader that supports and challenges staff. While we should not change things that are not broken, I am a firm believer in identifying room for improvement in processes, procedures, and individuals. I look forward to working with the council and department heads to finish the projects that you've started and bring fresh ideas that will continue to make Miami Springs the wonderful city that it is. If you select me, Chris Russo, as your city manager, I will always represent the city of Miami Springs with the utmost professionalism and pride. Again, I thank you for this opportunity, and if any of you have any questions at any time, please feel free to call me, let me know. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Russo.
Any questions for Mr. Russo? All right, thank you again, it's a pleasure meeting you today, all of us.
Mayor, Council members, I present to you Mr. Juan Jimenez.
Hello, Mr. Jimenez, if you could give one moment because Councilman Behet stepped out for a second, so let's. One second to get back. Did you enjoy the tour of Miami Springs?
It's a beautiful city. Thank you.
Who gave you the tour?
Omar.
Omar.
The tour guide, standing up.
You're lucky.
Did he make you jog?
He knows our parks, so he's taking to our best place.
No, he didn't, no, we were in the, in the van, in the bus, it was really nice.
Okay.
No complaints there.
We could give him a Northwest Thirty-Six Street tour at night.
I've done that tour.
Yeah, a little longer. Yeah, maybe just, unless he might have had a family emergency or something. Okay, good, good. All right, please go ahead.
Madam Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council members, I just wanted to thank you for this opportunity to be considered for your next city manager. Growing up in Hialeah, I always knew that Miami Springs was a really nice place. I always knew it was a nice city, but it wasn't until this process that I realized how special Miami Springs was, just in this commission meeting today and this council meeting, excuse me, I say commission sometimes, so out of habit, and just in this council meeting today, you see the, the level of involvement from the communities, from the community, the different groups, civic groups, and that just makes this place truly special. The city has a unique history and truly a rich culture. It's, it's really nice to see. As a matter of fact, your residents, and I've spoken to a number of them, they, they live here with pride. They are proud to call themselves residents of Miami Springs. This morning, it was pretty funny, I, when I got, when I got to the community center, I got out, I was checking, you know, my reflection, making sure my tie was okay, and a resident that lives across the street from the adult center says, "You look gorgeous." So I turned around, and it was a gentleman that walked out, he was throwing some garbage away in his, in his front, so I walked over, talked to him, and I said, he asked me, he says, "You're like the third guy I see in soup." And I said, I said, "Yeah, we're having the city manager interviews, I'm a candidate." And he says, "If you get the job, please protect downtown. Please protect this city." He goes, "I've lived here since nineteen seventy-seven, and I, and I love this town. I have a free meal right across the street, I have the police department right down the street, a park, a pool." He just kept, you know, talking about how much he loved this city, and I felt that pride. And he's, and he loves that small-town feel. So as your manager, if selected, I will work hard with honesty, integrity, and transparency to preserve that small-town feel and community pride. Some of you during our interviews expressed some concerns about a new manager coming in and how they interact with staff. There's like this rumor going around that, or a fear, not a rumor, that a new manager comes in with his own team, but that's not true. A good manager works with the staff, learns the culture, and that's what I intend on doing. I don't have my own team, I have, all my friends have jobs, they don't need jobs here. What I will do is, I will work with the staff, I will empower them, I will encourage them to continue to educate themselves in their fields and to fight the status quo. The one thing I will not tolerate and I don't want to hear is, oh, that's the way it's always been done, because there's always a way to do it better. Technology changes, people change, expectations change. So there's, there's always a better way to do things. Imagine if Henry Ford in the car says, "Yeah, you know what, this Model A, that's good enough, we're just going to keep this." That's just not the way it works. Expectations change, design, needs change, and we have to change with it. So I will challenge the staff to continuously be looking to improve and change the way they do their jobs. I'm not a manager that's going to sit around in the office all day. If I get a call from a resident, because let's say they get a code violation or there's an issue, I will take the time to go meet with them in person. I'll go to their house, or invite them over to City Hall, but it's an important item, it's an important issue for them, so they deserve my time. So my promise to you and to everyone here is, if I'm your manager, my door will be open, you could come in. Just, if you just want to talk, come in. I will never turn away a resident or an opportunity to meet with a resident or business owner. During my lunch, I will frequent, I will eat at a local eatery, go to the Mylums, and visit different businesses. I want to participate in the women's club, in the, in the Lions Club, in the Rotary Club. If they invite me to their meetings, I would love to go and speak to them. So in closing, I believe that I have the, I possess the traits and the qualities that will take this city, preserve this city, and, and improve this city, and make the residents or continue, the, continue, the residents will continue to be proud of this city. I thank you so much for your time, I really appreciate this process. It's been long and it's nerve-wracking, to be honest, but it's, this is truly a great city and you have a lot to be proud of. Thank you, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jimenez.
Thank you, Mr. Jimenez. Anyone have any questions for Mr. Jimenez? Okay, no, no, I just, I was asking to see if anyone had any questions, there's no questions right now.
No questions.
Thank you so much. Okay.
Honorable Mayor, Council members, at this time I present your last candidate to you, Mr. Dale Martin.
Hello.
Good evening. First of all, I'd, my name is Dale Martin. I'm a current resident of Fernandini Beach, Florida, formerly served as a city manager in that community. I'd like to thank you for the hospitality that your community has shown me and the other candidates this evening, and I'd also like to thank you for your public service to your community as well. I know it's, takes a lot more than people realize, and a lot more commitment than you probably believed when you first ran for office. I'm very honored to be considered part of this group of candidates. I think Ms. Higginbotham has done an exceptional job of presenting to you four candidates that are all capable of doing the job. So what, as I indicated to some of you earlier, was it comes down to fit and philosophy, and it is solely up to you as the City Commission to determine what is the best fit. But I'd like to share with you my concepts of philosophy, that, how I would enter into the role of city manager for not only Miami Springs, but any community that I would serve. And my professional philosophy is guided by two documents. The first document is a series of guideposts that were prepared in nineteen fifty-six by a gentleman who is often referred to as the Dean of City Managers. His name was Mr. L. P. Cookingham. He was the City Manager of Kansas City for nearly fifteen years or so in the mid-twentieth century, and he created these twenty-one guideposts, twenty-two guideposts, I'm not going to read them all, but I'd like to share with you a few that I would hope that whoever becomes your next city manager, that you instill these guideposts, not only in the way that you interact with that city manager, but you hold the city manager to the same standard of these guideposts. So let me share four or five that really are meaningful to me as a, as my professional philosophy. Never forget that the council, to the best of its ability, expresses the will of the people. There will be times when you will not understand why the council takes certain actions, but you will find that the council is generally right, and the members express public opinion as they see it and as they learn it from their constituents. Another one, don't let problems frighten you, for there's a logical solution to each one you have to face. If they seem too tough for today, let them go until tomorrow, for when they seem simpler. Problems which occurred to you and concern you today may be completely forgotten in a week. Next, never forget that you are a servant of the people, and instill that philosophy in each of your employees. If you find one that cannot understand this philosophy, remove him. Another, always remember that you will never get in trouble or be embarrassed by doing what is right. You may lose your job for standing up for what you think is right, but you always get another and a better job, besides, you will be able to sleep soundly. Finally, always think of the city in which you work as your city. Participate in civic movements for a betterment, and above all, live in your city. But my professional philosophy would be meaningless unless it was founded on a solid personal philosophy. And my personal philosophy, I've found an interesting little way of sharing my personal philosophy, is one day on a long drive, my wife and I said, "What are four songs?" There's millions of songs in this world. What are four songs, if you had to pick four songs, and only four, what would be four songs that represent your personal philosophy? There's no right answers, no wrong answers, and you deserve the right to change. So let me share you my four songs. First song, country song by a gentleman Travis Tritt, "It's a Great Day to Be Alive. Every day is a gift." The second song is "The Star Spangled Banner." Like Mr. Vakras, I too am a veteran. This is the greatest country in the world, and it's not perfect, but that's why our Constitution says, "In order to form a more perfect union." The third song, since these are my rules, I'm going to stretch it a bit, is actually a composition or a compilation of songs. It handles Messiah. Handel's Messiah, if you're not familiar with it, traces the arc of the life of Jesus, and that is the role of faith in my life. The final song, those three will never change, but the final song changes depending on my circumstances in life. And right now, my third song is "You've Got a Friend" by Carole King. You find out who your friends are and keep them close, and you will find out truly who are your friends. And I think that's my four-song philosophy, and I encourage each one of you to talk it over with your family, what are your four songs? So with that, thank you, and I wish you well.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Any questions, Ms. Martin? All right, thank you so much. Donna and Bill, also if you could express our appreciation to all the four candidates, and I don't know if they're coming back up or if they going, it's been a busy day for them, so I understand if this is it for them, but please, you know, again, express our appreciation to them for their interest in, in working for our city and for spending the day with us today, answering, we had a lot, I know each of us had a lot of questions individually for them.
Yes, you did.
And Donna, thank you for all the work you've done in getting us this far.
You've had all the information on all of the candidates, and now the decision is yours.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Bill, I know you did a lot. I guess before we move to the next topic, I just wanted to revisit what Councilman Santeen had suggested at the last council meeting of moving up. Right now, we are going to make a selection on July twentieth.
Madam Chair.
Yes, sir.
If I may.
And it won't be tonight, I assure you, I'm not ready tonight, but I'm saying if we try to move it up a week or so, the selection process.
Madam Chair, I, I wanted us to consider that. I, I personally, I've not only read all the material and, and, and sized up the, the four finalists, and I appreciate the work that Donna Higginbotham had considered, and I think it's important that we, I'm not trying to hurry a decision, but I can tell you, in my personal estimation- in my personal estimation that I'm ready to vote on this tonight. I don't know that I need more time. I've already met the four individuals. I had very good engagement. That's why I didn't have any questions for them here. My concern, so that's where I stand. That's where, that's how I feel, is that and I know we, we had agreed that we would do the selection on July 20th. And I'm, and I'm just a little concerned about the timing because I know that there is some due diligence that has to be done once we make a decision. I know that the, our HR director has to look at any public records that there are on that particular individual, just to make sure that we all, the final I's are dotted and T's are crossed. But in my experience of selection of important personnel, including college presidents and so forth. I've never had an experience where we didn't finish in the same day deliberated and made a decision. So that's my, that's my, my sense of it. I would prefer we did it tonight or wait 24 hours if you like, but I really don't want us to wait till July 20th to do it. That would mean that the, whoever we decide on, presuming all the other paperback checks out, you know, would be negotiating with the individual and we would not vote on a, on a, on a package until August, which would then, you know, we would be well into our budget planning process. I know things are what they are and I knew coming in that we had, you know, we, we didn't want to rush into things, but we also didn't want to roam. Necessary, but those are my thoughts on it, Mayor.
Okay. Thank you, Councilman. Yes, sir.
Mayor, yeah. So I wanted to just chime in. This, this has been a kind of an expedited process, right? And it's, it's an important decision. I know that our, our outgoing city manager said that his plan was always to retire at 70 years old, but we, we kind of got worried about this a little. You know, I, I wish we could have had a little more time to, to do that. So we've been, we've been doing this pretty expeditiously. Also, the, the package of, of, that the Mercer Group provided, there, there were options where there could have been like a, a, a public engagement event where, where the people could come in and formally meet with the candidates. There were, there were also some other things like, it's kind of à la carte in terms of what they offer, what this is what other cities have done. There was also where, where like the different chairs and the different departments within the city staff meet with the candidate. One of the things, because one of our, our finalist candidates happens to be serving as the interim. I, I always thought that that was going to be a little bit weird. I know that that wasn't part of the process. But I feel like because we didn't do that community engagement event, like I don't see, like we've been, we've been going pretty fast here. And I, I don't think that we, I think we need to not decide this tonight or in 24 hours. I think that like, so if any of you, the Gazette came out today and, and, and Tom Curtis kind of lamented in his opinion piece because there wasn't, because nothing had happened. There was really not a lot to report. He was kind of lamented that we're lamenting that we moved this, this council meeting to today. It didn't make it into the Gazette. I know that on miamysprings.com they posted something on the 22nd. It's only been a week. I would like for time to pass for the public to get to, to look over the credentials of the candidates. Obviously, they understand that, that, that the city manager is at the service of the council and we, we've done very, in a very exhaustive process. And we did a very exhaustive interviews with all the candidates, but I don't, I don't think that it's, that we should rush this and make a decision. I know that, so the 20th is in three weeks from today, right? So we're not, I don't, I still don't think that we're, we're, we're talking about like dragging this on for a long time. I think we've been moving pretty expeditiously and this is a big decision and, and I think it's a little bit rushed. I know that we discussed that when we picked the 20th, we discussed, can we do it a week or so earlier, which you suggested, but it didn't seem like that worked in terms of the days. I'm open to, to, to discussing bringing it up a week, but I, I'm in, I don't feel like it's in our best interest to make a decision tonight or even within the next week. I think that we should let, let, you know, let, let the public kind of see things a little more and, and review this. We've had this meeting. And I think that that, I don't think we're going to lose a candidate. I know that's something that was brought up. I don't think we're going to lose a candidate if we wait two or three weeks to make this decision.
I, I've stated it from the beginning, I won't be ready to make a decision tonight. There's no way. We've just met with candidates. We've had a day and I, there's a lot of information that they've provided and there's a lot of diligence that I'm going to be doing on my part on following up with, you know, with what I've learned from the candidates. So I, today is off the table. I don't think, you know, that, that I think we had already agreed on that. The only thing I was suggesting was possibly, and next week won't be possible for me personally, but I think there was the possibility and we said of revisiting it, of moving it up a week, which would mean in two weeks, which I think is a reasonable amount of time, if that's possible. If not, it'll stay at three weeks. But I, I think it's unfair to the candidates, but particularly to, to our constituents for us to make a decision. Such a serious decision that, you know, is, is basically the CEO of, of the city. You know, after just meeting with them one day. So is, I, what I wanted to ask is to revisit, and I think there was a conflict with all of us because, you know, in July, we usually don't meet and everyone's on vacation, but of moving it up to this, what would that be, the second?
There's the week of the, in, in July, right?
Not the first week of July. That's the week of 4th of July.
There's the week of the 10th through 14th.
Right. Is that possible or is that a conflict for anyone? Is there a night then? Or is anyone in agreement in moving it? Let's do this first. We have already settled on the 20th. Is there an interest in moving it up a week to the second week of July? If possible, if we can.
I would agree with that because I'm, you know, it gives us enough time, but also we have to take into consideration that these candidates are obviously actively engaging in other types of interviews and they also have to provide a notice of resignation. So at bare minimum, I'm thinking these candidates have maybe a minimum of 30 days resignation notice. So I
let's, let's go ahead and do that. And I know Councilman Santin, you were for trying to move it up a little bit. So is that, and instead of normally what we do is ask Eric to reach out to all of us later and figure out our schedules, but is there on that second week of July, right now, is there a conflict for anyone that won't be able to attend a meeting? Second week of July.
So the, the week of the 10th to the 14th, I think if I remember correctly, Councilman Vasquez, you had, you, you were traveling that week and there was, there was an issue, right?
Yeah, there's a possibility that I could do the 13th, but that's, that would be pushing.
Okay, but you don't know for sure.
Would it be possible?
The 20th I'm available.
Okay. Possible to have some, somebody on Zoom?
I
Have a quorum present?
Oh, you're going to be on Zoom.
Either way, either way, he would be on Zoom.
Either way, you're busy. Okay. But you're not sure about the 13th. Okay. Is the 13th, what day of the week is that? It's Thursday. Is the 13th okay for the rest of us?
At what time?
Well, it would be six, seven, you know, we usually move special meetings up to six, but if not at seven, it'll be in the evening, regular count. Okay. So let's do this. Let's leave it at the 20th. If, if we're all okay with the 13th as a backup and that and I can confirm, confirms with, give Councilman Vasquez time to confirm, then we'll do it the 13th. That moves it up seven days. I think that's reasonable and enough time for all of us. You know, I feel comfortable with two weeks to make my decision for sure. And yes, sir. Okay. And if not.
If we're going to do that, then would we also move the Milich?
No, we can't. We can't do that. No.
Right. So it'll be two meetings. Yes.
I can't do that.
Okay. Then let's leave it on the 20th. Settled. We'll leave it on the 20th. Okay. All right. Let's move on. And I know it's, you know, it's just, these processes take time, but it's a really important decision and I think we all want to, to make the best decision for, on behalf of our city. Okay. So the next agenda item is a request that I had. I have, it's agenda item for the record, 12.
I think I am.
Oh, I'm sorry. Sorry. Yes, sir. Okay. Councilman Vasquez, 12A.
Through the chair and
Yes, sir.
Members of, of council. So I have shared with you on numerous occasions, on the number of workshops that I've been involved in outside of the city and other experiences. And, and for the most part, it, it, it is my experience that workshops can be more expedient if you have someone facilitate, which is not us, just to keep us on track. And I, and I became even more sure of that on our last workshop on strategic management. Because I think it's difficult for one person, in your case, you, Madam Mayor, to try to keep track of all the, you know, which way, how things are moving along. And I'll give you one example to illustrate this. And by the way, this is an idea that Vice Mayor Santin had raised when we were going to first have the strategic planning discussion. He had recommended that we have some, some facilitator there. And there was a moment where we kind of stuck and we asked Alex to come up and, and, and help us along and Councilman Fahad said, you know, you should be up here, right? And so my point being, not every workshop, because of the different intensities of the workshops, requires to have a facilitator to keep us on track and keep us moving forward. Not as a participant of the content, but rather to have us kind of moving along and, and so we can accomplish the goals of the workshop itself. But I think that for the next time we have this workshop on the strategic plan, I think we're going to, we're going to need some help in that regard. It's a very specific task of facilitating. You know, maybe the, when we do the business development task force, that might be needed. I don't think we need the facilitator for the, for the budget workshops. We've all been around that many times and we've been able to do it in two days. But I, and I know there's a cost attached to this, right? Because you have to pay the facilitator. But I bring it to you, you know, based on my experience, based on my observations of the, of that particular workshop and the strategic strategic plan discussion, that I think we would benefit from having someone there who could just guide the process and help us reach the objectives of the workshop in an expedient way. So those are my thoughts on that.
Thank you. And I, I think, and we've always been able to do this, it's case by case, depending on the workshop, depending on what it is, we'll decide that for the next workshop. And we have two workshops coming up, well, that we need to schedule. Obviously, the budget workshops, which are on a whole different level, that'll take up every other Monday night in August, other than the council meetings. So be sure to leave every Monday night in August.
Through the chair. That, that is exactly my thought.
Yes.
On a case by case.
Case by case. So let's
Think about it and say, hey.
When we go to schedule the, and we, right now, I think we've left the street, well, because of timing, because we don't meet in July and then the budget workshops in August. The strategic plan workshop is going to have to be bumped to September. I don't see any realistic, you know, ability to do that, but we, we can discuss that when we go to plan the day of how we do the facilitator. I believe our idea with the strategic plan was what Councilman Fahad had said of making it very tight, you know, of what we already had and just kind of updating what was, what had been a strategic plan years and years ago.
Mayor, can I just chime in? So I'm not sure how long it went. It was under three hours. I know the, the workshop. I think I personally felt like going into it like this is going to be something that was going to, to be kind of a, right. I, I didn't think that we needed to pay to have a firm come and lead us through the entire process. I felt like we needed to try to kind of strike that balance between like, you know, just a cursory updating. I feel like what we did is we went very in-depth, in-depth early. I never thought we were going to get to do everything. And I think that one of the things that we found is that, and, and I think you pointed it out, Mayor, that, that there were some things that maybe we needed the, the city staff to work on and, and kind of come up with to bring to us so that, and I think that by the time we got to the gentleman, I, I feel like we did kind of a cursory job on the economic development because I think we felt like, hey, listen, let, you know, these are some things staff has to come back to us with. So I think even though he came up and helped, I mean, I don't think that we should be paying for a facilitator. I think that we need to chunk it up. As you had mentioned, I think that, that we gave staff direction and when they come back to us, I think that it, it will go a little smoother because I, you know, we kind of, remember we did the whole mission vision, the, kind of the big 30,000 foot stuff.
Part that's left. It was pretty cut and dry.
Yeah. Yeah. But I think, I think that it, it will, it will go a little better and you know, and I think that, I think that we all kind of felt like, hey, this, we're not going to get through all of this. This is a, you know, let's, let's have staff come back to us with, with some stuff. So I, just from my point of view, I think that that, yeah, it was, it was a bit long. It wasn't like prohibitively long, but I think that we realized what the next steps were in, in order to chunk it up as a process. And I, I don't, I don't think we need to be paying for, for, I think that I think that we can have a, a meeting, at least if we take it on a case by case basis. I don't think we need to ask a third party to come in and kind of mediate it. I think that we'll be able to do.
And I think we can decide that with, you know, but Councilman Vasquez, I appreciate your comment of, you know, let's really think it before we do a workshop, you know, next workshop and decide one way or the other. I tend to agree with Councilman Fahad. I think in three hours, we did a lot. I mean, you know, these things have no set time of, you know, it's a time test. There, we're talking about making big plans for the future. But, and I'm not sure exactly with that, who we would get unless we pay somebody to do the strategic plan. And if you look at the strategic plan that was there before, that they paid somebody to do it. I don't feel like that person had a grasp of Miami Springs. It was kind of, you know, it looked more like cut and paste of just putting in things, but I felt like the soul of it, you know, and maybe it's just me, was kind of missing. I know it's an old plan. But nonetheless, that's something we'll decide when we go to plan the next strategic workshop. We'll all vote on it and decide which way. We want to go on that and we'll do it case by case for every workshop. Some of them that appear to be, you know, you know, that we want to move through quickly and, and effectively, we'll certainly have that option of doing a facilitator.
Through the chair. Yes. I'd like to see, I know Tammy's working on a draft. I want to see where we're holding pulse there, in what direction we're going with Tammy. And then I think we can regroup and see if we need that extra help. Because at the end of the day, that comprehensive report that was done many, many moons ago, it was like typed in, there was no really broad outreach to the community. We have so much technology now. So well, we didn't see what I think.
And I think that's what we had left it at, right? That Tammy was going to kind of use what, I know you were making a lot of notes and then kind of, and, and the big thing was work with staff to see what's, you know, what they felt were possible goals to add on there. You know, possible goals that we can attain in a relatively short time. And then, you know, always, you know, we always have to think five and 10 years down the road, what we'd like for the city.
Through the chair.
I'm sorry. Go ahead.
I'm in agreement with Councilman Vasquez in the sense that what he was realising in reference to the facilitating the actual workshop and the strategic plan, you know, kind of facilitates it coming together, but also putting it together. So that's why I think a facilitator is not just about helping us, guide us, so we won't get lost in track, but also the, they're going to help us put it together so we can go back to it and, you know, mess with it, measure what things we want to attain or not attain. It just helps with that process. You know, I know we mentioned one of us to maybe take the initiative and try to, you know, put it together. And I think we all kind of look like, with what time are we going to do something like that? So I, but I'm in agreement with the rest of you in reference to waiting for the next workshop to see how that goes. And then we can all make a smart decision at that point that, you know, if it's worthy or not, but that's the reason.
And we'll do that, you know, for every workshop, just, you know, and I think we've always known that. We've always kind of done that anyway, but it's good, Councilman Vasquez, that you articulated it and, you know, and that's, that'll be our goal.
So just to
Yes, sir.
Last quick things on this, right? I, I think it would have benefited us if we had had, we, we, we decided we were going to follow the format of the plan. And then we realized that, you know, that it had to, it should have been structured differently. And so we got into the, the minutia of doing that. And so I, I don't want us to repeat that. Now, we have, we have some information. We had some discussions. And so I don't want us to repeat that. Now, we have, we have some information, we had some discussions, we gave some direction to the staff. And I agree with Councilwoman Bravo for the next part of this workshop, we ought to have a discussion ourselves and say, okay, here, here is how we want to follow this the next time. Here's where we want to fill it in. And, and I think that that provides us the guidelines for ourselves.
And Mayor, I would add, I had a, I had a resident that I guess was, was following along and who messaged me and said, like, the smartest thing that was said that night of the workshop was when Roger kind of stopped us and said, like, hey, like, maybe what you guys need to do is talk to staff and get input from, from staff. Because we were kind of debating some things, it was like, you know, I think that that staff needs to come to you with a lot. And I think that that was the impetus. And, and I think that that, that was kind of the, the tipping point of like, well, yeah, you know what? I think that that, you know, where that is the logical next step that's going to help us. So I, I trust that that's going to help make things go much more smoothly when we meet again.
Sounds good. All right. And again, a workshop is specifically a workshop. We don't vote. It's to work, you know, to kind of exchange ideas and, you know, on a project, you know, on whatever it is. Okay, so let's move on to the next agenda item, and that is 12B. And that is a request from me. I wanted to, and I know we've kind of discussed this, but we haven't really given the city direction here. We need to do something. We keep, you know, we're hiring new staff. We just hired a new finance director and, you know, we don't have a place to put staff. The city has grown. The police department has grown. The police department is sharing City Hall. They're, they're hiring, they've hired several new officers since I've been on the council and our City Hall, and I love the architecture of it. It's at Miami Modern. It's very, you know, it's just really fits in, I think, with Miami Springs, with the history and all this. But we need more space. And what seems to be possible is using the, the police parking lot across the street over here to our east and having possibly, you know, parking, police parking at the bottom, public parking, and then the police headquarters on the top. But that may not be the only option. So what I'd like to get is consensus from the council to direct our architects and engineers, BNA, to start exploring possibilities and bring them back to us, possibilities for police headquarters, City Hall. It may be that we rent more space from the city to accommodate a certain department. I'm not sure ultimately what it'll decide, but we've got to get started on this. And if we're going to build a new police headquarters, which I think is the best option, again, there may be a lot better options, but I think that would alleviate the police, the space that the police department is currently using in City Hall, would open it up for the City Hall staff. So that, like I've said before, we have some employees working, you know, two, two in the size of a storage closet. None of us have offices in City Hall because we can't take up the space in City Hall that, you know, that, that somebody else, you know, staffing, a staff would need. So that would open up the police department, create a lot more space in City Hall, provide a public parking garage, which is needed. And that, that parking lot right now is owned, I mean, it was bought by the police with, I think, some kind of special funds that are for that purpose. So.
And Mayor, so.
So what would, it would be is really just, and Tammy, correct me if I'm wrong on this, but I think right now it would be directing BNA, our architects and engineers, to start, our consultants, to start exploring, they're the ones that built the senior center and the pool, to start exploring possibilities of, you know, what can be done.
Mayor, can I, because I mentioned this at the, the last meeting, can we also have staff work with our grant writer and also with the chief? Because I know that part of the, part of the benefit of, of using that space, because that parking belongs to police, is that there were funding sources that that we could tap into. And that may, before we get BNA, we're, you know, exploring options, if there is a funding option.
I think before, I, because we're going to have to put in an appro, I mean, we should put in an appropriation with the state for the space. If we put it in as an appropriation as for police headquarters, it's much more likely to get approved by the state than if we put it in for a new City Hall. But if we have some sort of goal already, perhaps we could get it in our appropriations. Our appropriations go in in the fall, like late fall or something. You know, and that's, then it goes through, you know, the legislative session that starts, you know.
Yeah, my, my only, my only concern is before, because if, if we have BNA just work on, on options, if we narrow it down to in that space, I don't remember the specifics of it. And Tammy, maybe you, you do, but I remember that there was a cause, like a value to us using that location. And, you know, because it was for law enforcement, that there was, there was like a benefit to us in terms of funding, because if that's the case, then we can have, you know, what are our options there? For what it's worth of, you know, they have to have, they use that right now for parking and they have to have parking. And if they, right, ground level parking. And then if they have to have a station, and if we can get a floor of public parking, like to, to me, I feel like it's more important that that we leverage the fact that there's a value in using that property and, and doing a police station that, that can accommodate what we want and having that parking. And then if we can have some public parking, that's fine, but it doesn't have to be a parking garage. I know that I'm a parking hawk, but like one floor or something can be public parking.
You know, Tammy, it's, it's really, I, I think it's always a good idea that whenever we're doing something, we look at opportunities of what we can add to it, you know, of how we can. And if we're building a police headquarters with parking in the middle, the opportunity for perhaps adding a central floor of public parking, which is something we need, you know, we're already spending a lot to get it done. And usually that won't work. The reason that I don't think we can go with a grant first is we can't apply for a grant unless we know what we're applying for. Nobody's going to give us a grant just for
I may have misspoken, though. It may not be a grant, but I, I would encourage us to, to, to go back and find out what it was that, that we discussed that was the value of using that spot. Because it was deemed for law enforcement, there was a way for us to construct there where we were kind of getting a lot of value. Because if, if there is a value to that space, that would narrow it for BNA. And we could say, hey, what are the options? Like, give us a bunch of different options for how to use that space, rather than give us options that aren't kind of like focused like that.
Through the chair.
Yes, sir.
I think it would help, it would also help us. And on the way my brain works is to get a full understanding of what the needs are of a police department, how much square footage, what is it that they need? And how could that be accommodated with the space that's there?
Okay. And I think BNA would work with that. That'd be part of their scope is looking at what the need is. And so let's do, I guess we can do two things is, one is, I'm all for using that space. In my mind, that's the space. However, I know when they were building the senior center, you know, it went back to perhaps not using the space over there. It was going to be by the golf course, because that was also space. And then, you know, and there were different options and stuff. Ultimately, it came back to this. I, I feel if we're really serious about doing this, having it police headquarters and not, you know, related to a new City Hall is the only way that the appropriations are going to be realistically looked at. Obviously, by our legislators and getting them up there, but then in avoiding the governor's veto at the end, a new police headquarters, there's going to be more grant and funding opportunities for that, the appropriations. So what BNA, what all we're asking right now is for them to explore that, to go move forward. And we need consensus with that, because that's our, our consultants to kind of look at the possibilities. They'll be the ones to work out, you know, what's needed, what's reasonable for the, the police force that we have.
Chief has already explored some of those options as well. So, okay, yes.
And I think it's a good fit for the city and, you know, it needs to be done. You know, we can't keep putting people, you know, or hiring professionals and saying, by the way, you get this little corner over here. And, you know, that you just can't even work effectively like that either.
Through the chair.
Yes, sir.
So as, as Councilman Fajad was saying, the, that's probably the best first option to talk about. I know, talking to, back when William was here, he mentioned that it's a conversation that's going to have to have, because they already used the funds for the police for parking. So technically, they're not allowed to do it again. But maybe because there's going to be another use, and also because it's going to be covered, there's a possibility, but it's not written stone.
And it'll be for headquarters. And that's why I'm saying, it's not provide police parking, but we're using their facility. And, you know, it's all of this, it, and it'll be looked at as to what is our best way to, you know, to go after, to get it done.
Look, I just, I think that that's one of the first options. But we also, if that option doesn't become a feasible one, we have to think a little bit outside the box. And this is a little one that gets more complicated, because obviously, now you're starting making decisions about the City Hall. I think it's been brought up before about a possibility of the multi-purpose building on the country club. And obviously, doing that, you can do, I know we said, well, we're going to get the money. You can do a public and, and private partnership. Obviously, they build it for you, you lease the footprint of the, of the building. And they are able to go get financing for it. You do a 30, 40 year lease. And when it's over, it's your building. So we get that without having to put funds on it. And we got a City Hall, multi-purpose building that could be used for a lot of other things, including improving the, the country club. I mean, you can go down to Granada and Core Gables and tell them how their revenue has gone up after they did their remodeling of a building that I thought was pretty good already. And then, of course, you can concentrate on this building being just the police and fire department. So just first, I'm in agreement, you know, where is the most feasible and but at the same time, it's one of the things that we should think a little bit outside the box, because we're killing two birds with one stone.
So I guess the ish, the consensus here that we need, and this is just directing them to start looking at it. You know, we got to take the first step. They'll start looking at it. We're not making any commitment that we can even do it. You know, the ideal thing is to use whatever we're doing is to add something to it, you know, either with the country club, that then we're redoing the country club, that we're adding a parking garage while we're building the headquarters. I mean, that's my, my goal is, you know, that whatever we're doing is we're, you know, getting something else, squeezing it in there too, because we're already spending the money. But then the consensus would be, and Tammy and Roger would be two things is we want a consensus for BNA, just to look at the possibilities of the police headquarters. I think funding wise, that's where the, you know, it's less likely with appropriations, we're in a state appropriations. We got state appropriations for, you know, the senior center. We're going to need state appropriations for there. And that's more likely is what is going to pass. The other things we can ask for, but you know, the, the likelihood that they'll go through. It, in my experience is, you know, no matter how far it gets, it's going to get the governor's veto at the end, if it gets that far, and it probably won't. So the, the two things, however, we need to explore possibilities. You know, I, I think that's, you know, totally reasonable. So I would say, what is the consensus? Either we just direct BNA right now to look at that possibility of, you know, what can be done to build the police headquarters there and come back with us as to this is what we estimated cost, this is the space you need, this is the possibilities. Or we ask them to just look at that and other possibilities throughout the city. And is that, I don't know how much more complicated it is for asking them just a cursory look at other possibilities throughout. I mean, we're a pretty small city and there aren't a whole lot of places, the country club, there's an area of the golf course. Don't please, I hate to say this, because everyone will think I want to close down the golf course. We're talking about an area of the golf course over by Curtis Mansion that is not golf. It's just vacant land that, you know, one time the senior center was going to be there. We're not doing anything to shut down the golf course, develop on a golf course, you know, what, by any means, but what, yes, ma'am.
Sorry, through the chair. Does it have to be BNA? Is there like a restriction of, of opening that up for different design options or opportunities to explore what?
We do use another architect or engineer record. It has to be done through an RFQ process.
It's, there, there are on, on, they're basically our employees, that instead of full-time employees, they're consultants, but they're on staff for them.
Retainer.
So that's right, they're on a retainer for doing that. Right. Anything else would be. And that doesn't mean we build with them by any means.
Okay.
You know, this is just, they're on our staff. It's like asking our, if we had an architect in-house, you know, and engineers in-house to look at that.
It's in their scope of work with a retainer we have with them.
Right. But it's not at all, you know, that, that's who, if we do decide to build.
Mayor, for the purposes of the question you posed for consensus, I, I am in favor of exploring that option, looking into the value, like it's, it's close by, they'll still, still be here. I feel like that's going to be the most cost-effective way in terms of, instead of like, kind of building a whole new building, it's letting City Hall expand within here, having, you know, having that be a police headquarters right across the street from fire rescue. And again, given, given my recollection of how that was going to be best in terms of funding and also support and getting people in Tallahassee behind it when it comes to, to supportive appropriations.
And there may be support at the federal level, too.
Right. Yeah. So I, I feel like that's, I feel like that is our most cost-effective way. And I think that if we're going to ask BNA to do something, that's the most cost-effective way to have BNA, like just focus on a narrow subject. I don't mean to, I, I just, that's my opinion. If you were asking what we have consensus.
Let's have, go ahead.
I'm going to go with this. This is very needed for the city. And I think we waited long enough. So I would like to move forward with.
Okay. But, but the, what we're trying to decide now is, are we going to ask, well, are we going to ask BNA to look just what can be done with this pro, you know, I keep pointing there because that's the, where the police, and I'm not at Councilman Fajad, but I'm pointing at.
If we're going to go, I mean, there needs to be a definitive intention. So if we want them to go ahead and explore options, that's great. But are we going to execute? So I would like to get started with what you said, Maria, with mayor, with exploring options for the police headquarters.
Okay.
But I am in agreement with Councilman Fajad of the location where it makes sense strategically. And I think even mayor, I think you may have even, or one of us, not me, but to bridge the buildings. I thought that was pretty cool.
That might be possible if, you know, it's a bridge.
That's part of the options they can explore. There's plenty of work for them to do there.
You know, it's already there. The property is ours. I think we, the process would go a lot quicker.
Just looking at realistic, you know, it doesn't matter how nice it is somewhere else. What really matters is the funding that we can get. And it's a very different thing, asking for funding for a police headquarters than asking for funding.
We'll get the funding. I'm optimistic about that. And especially when it comes to our police, I, I just don't see, I think there's a lot of support there.
Okay.
And I'm on board with moving this forward. And
Okay. So all we need is consensus. We don't need to vote. We just need to direct Tammy to reach out to and Roger to reach out to BNA. Roger, did you have a question?
Yeah, I just want to clarify one thing is the, from what I'm hearing from the council, I believe the idea is for Tammy to work with BNA to get a sort of scope of work to present to you at the next meeting for the exploration of a police headquarters location and sort of, you know, the options that are available for exploration.
But I think the location, we've, we've narrowed it down. There's consensus on, in that location, what can the options be?
Correct. Yeah. So but the, the general idea is to have BNA sort of create a scope for, for the council, bring it back, and then you'll approve that for them to start the work, right?
Is everyone okay with that? Councilmen and team?
Yeah, I guess for right now, let's, let's see what comes out and see what they're saying.
And BNA knowing with BNA, they, when they're doing scope of work, they will tell us, you know what, this might be an option. Do you want us to, you know, they're very, what would I say, accessible, reachable, and, and thinking out of the box for us a lot, you know. So it may be that while they're saying that, look, there's, we've looked at, you know, others, but right now.
Yeah, I just, I don't want to just cut short, you know, because it was the easiest thing. And then later on, not even five years later, we're having problems there again.
Right.
Okay. So because no matter what, we're going to be limited to what we can do there.
And we need to make sure whatever we do is we, you know, take into account growth, you know, because the possibility is growth, which right now it's kind of a hard thing to do with this whole remote working, but everyone's coming back. So, you know, commercial real estate, it's, it's like hard to know. You know more about it, you know, what is happening with that.
So
Yes, sir.
So I'm, I'm in principle, I'm in support of that area, that, that piece of, of property. But I'd like to hear about the needs of the police department now and the needs of the police department in the future. Does that footprint provide enough space, two floors or whatever it is, for those needs? That, that would
And that will be part of their, they have to reach out to the police department to find that out in order to.
And I'm, I'm just a little concerned that the footprint seems kind of small, but that's
Can't be smaller than what they got now.
No, no, no. But wait a minute, I'm not, you know, because I can think of other, you know, I can think of other footprints. I'm just saying that we have our officer sitting right here could, you know, even maybe shed some light on us if we wanted to. But I think Uh, but, uh, I think that that would, can you come up?
Please.
And shed some light?
Thank you. Uh, oh, okay.
Yeah.
Captain Deal.
What you're discussing is something that Chief Guzman and I have been discussing since he came here. We've had, uh, things budgeted to do studies for a new station. Mr. Lonzo, of course, and Mr. Gorlin before him basically told us, hold off. So we do. While that does seem like the perfect spot, when you start to break down square footage and you're looking at a one-story police station, you may only get a few hundred extra square feet from what we already have now. We have two CST officers work in our investigations division. They're sharing a desk that is three feet wide, two feet, uh, long. So it's, we need space too.
Yeah. But we can go up and I think that's part of what we're trying to get B and A to do.
Two levels of police will.
That would be, that would be fine. Yeah, just.
Yes.
The square footage need, like, you know, Tammy, we've spoken about this too, the figuring out the needs, like you said, Mr. Vasquez, is exactly where it needs to start. And then from there.
Then it's good to know that you've got some of that because B and A will be reaching out to you and sitting and working like they have with, you know, all the other. And, um, they didn't do the Rex Center, I don't believe, but you know, every project the city does, I mean, that's part of it is, you know, what is it that we need? How much space? And then they come back with what's, you know, the possibilities are the options.
Some of the conferences that we've attended, um, the International Association Chief of Police Conference that we've attended in Chicago and Orlando over the past couple of years, we met with vendors that specifically, that's all they do. They build fire stations, they build police stations. So, and you know, there's some things in there that, uh, I don't know if B and A has ever done a police station before, but if they haven't, I would, I would highly suggest speak to Chief Guzman and see what he would recommend with regards to.
Oh, they, yes, that, that'll be part of it. And again, there are in-house architects and engineers. So this is where we go to, just as if we had someone in staff to do that. I mean, they are on staff. They're just, okay.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay. So let's move on to the next is twelve C, a request by Vice Mayor Santin.
Okay, um, what I'm proposing is, um, that we at least direct, um, direct the city attorney to start exploring, um, some updating on one of our ordinances, which is section one fourteen that addresses the, uh, public, um, roadway. And, um, I think some of the language that is there now, including, you know, a five dollar fee for certain things that are not properly done. Uh, you know, it's just, just needs an updating. So we need to have the consensus here that we want to direct the, um, the city attorney so he can write it up a little bit more tight for, you know, just for purposes of even, uh, uh, getting a permit, building permit to be separate from the actual, uh, project. So one thing doesn't get mixed with the other because it is public use. And, uh, and we need to kind of.
And this is an ordinance?
Yeah. It's on one fourteen, kind of speaks a little bit. I mean, Roger could kind of go a little bit about it.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. As Vice Mayor Santin was mentioning, uh, I've spoken with Vice Mayor, uh, separately, individually reviewing our road closure, uh, permitting framework. And I think he's identified, you know, that there's maybe a need to revisit this, explore some options. To, uh, update our sort of roadwork closure permitting procedures. At, at this point, I don't have anything in particular, any particular model, uh, that would be recommended, but you know, together with the Vice Mayor and, and our planners, perhaps looking into alternative procedures that, that might, uh.
But so this agenda item has more than just re- reviewing policies for road closures. This says creating a process for development agreements.
That's another.
On new commercial construction projects. I mean, I, I'd be open to, uh, because I mean, the, the road closure thing to me, I think is, is, is less of a factor. I think the bigger thing there is, uh, the development agreements, right? Maybe, maybe, yeah, the city attorney can, can look at, you know, what's in place with respect to development agreements on, on construction projects. I know that that's something that that's been debated about the, the, uh, uh, the town center and, and how long it took. I mean, we heard, we heard from staff last meeting about that, the, the process was that every time they asked for an inspection that they, they were within, based on our code, they were within a timeline of, of how that process went, right? So if, if, if we want to, I would be okay with having, uh, the city attorney's office, uh, look at what are, what are development agreements are, like what, you know, what we have written into the ordinance and, and, and a good way to go is always like, look, okay, so this particular thing, right? Development agreements on commercial construction projects. What are other municipalities doing? And bring it to us and just let us see. Hey, look, this is how it's worded right now in our ordinance. This is how other cities do it. And then I think that we can have a, a debate and talk about it. I mean, the road closure, sure throw that in there, but to me, that wasn't the, I think if I was understanding, right?
You're right. And, and just so I can, in reference to the development agreement, we do not have one.
Okay.
So that has to be something that, uh, you know, city attorney is going to draft. So we can have some discussions. And there are certain things that'll trigger the development agreement because not every single project is going to go into that point, but there's an option for city to, to exercise.
Right. But it strikes me like a next step is, is to explore, okay, if there's consensus, all right, city attorneys, well, if, if we do not have a development agreement right now in place, what is, what do other cities do? Is this common, uncommon? Right. And then when you kind of like lay that all out, right, where we start with consensus, look into that and explore it and bring it back to us. And then we look at it and we say, hey, look, it seems like everybody's doing this and we're not doing it. And then we say, okay, now draft something. I don't, I don't think the consensus is create of a process right now for development agreements. I think what we're getting now is consensus on, hey, if we all agree, look into this. Do we not have it? And what, explore and what are other municipalities doing? And where we, and then we can make that decision, go from there.
And Tammy, you wanted to say something?
Yes, because we've already had a conversation internally with CGA. And this is one of the items that we are going to work with them in, in future to, to have.
And I think that's long overdue, Councilwoman Santin. So thank you because, um, I think that that is something that, you know, for a city that didn't have development for so long.
Correct.
And now we're having a lot of development projects. Um, I'm sure that there's a lot of updating on those kinds of things that we can do to, to put the city in a better, um, situation, um, and to, you know, uh, for the business owner, the developers and stuff that, you know, that they can get their projects done in a timely manner and, and there's a good communication and also.
For sure.
All right. So, um, so what we're going to do is give consensus for our city attorney to explore development agreements, um, that, you know, that other cities might have in place that might be something fitting for us. And right now we don't have a development agreement. So, okay, so we're.
We'll, we'll, we'll work with Vice Mayor Santin or obviously the administration and, uh, our planners to explore the options available and present it to the council.
Okay. Wonderful. Okay. Um, so let's move on to, uh, reports and recommendations from our esteemed city attorney.
Hello. Good evening, uh, Mayor, members of the council. I don't have anything to report at this time. Except one minor thing, which is I was at the municipal league of cities. I won't name names, but, uh, I think we have two members on the council that know how to dance very well.
And you and your wife too. That was fun. Okay, um, city manager.
Yes, I just wanted to, uh, remind everybody that we have a few events this weekend. Um, we have the, um, Independence Day, um, sorry, the Independence Day pool party, uh, that is going to be happening on the fourth of July at the Miami Springs Aquatic Center from twelve PM uh, to five PM and pre-sale tickets are already, uh, ongoing. We also have the Fourth of July parade that I think all of us are going to be participating in. Uh, I know, Mayor, I think you're out, but, um, we will be there, um, for Monday. Uh, I'm sorry, Tuesday is the parade. Yeah. Um, and then also I just want to remind, oh, wait, hold on, sorry.
Yeah, Tuesday is Fourth of July.
That's Tuesday, Fourth of July, yes. So, and I just wanted to remind everybody that we unfortunately did have to cancel the fireworks. So just kind of spread the word so that, uh, we've been trying um, to get that word out as much as we could. So that'll be all.
Right. Tammy, and if we could post, or maybe it's there and I just didn't see it on our social media, more information about the parade itself, like where the route is going to be because we're going to be changing it, right? It's not going to be through, is it going to still go down Curtis past the golf course or it's going to turn?
It just shortens up at the end instead of, um, instead of going all the way down.
Everyone likes to know to go set up your lawn chairs and stuff, you know, what the route is and stuff. So if we could get a little more information on the social media, the actual route and.
And the wet zone.
And the time, is there still going to be a wet zone?
Yes.
Okay. So where that's going to be, but real clear, you know, on the diagram, so everyone can go early and set up their chairs.
Certainly.
Um, anything else?
That'll be all.
Okay. All right. So, um, let's do the city council and we'll start with the vice mayor.
Um, well, they have all left now, so, but I do want to thank them, especially the ones that have traveled all the way from Amelia Island. I probably would on that left Amelia Island. I was there about a month ago, but, uh, thank you for the effort. Uh, uh, thank you for the process that we're doing to try to make a, the right decision. I know that we have a good group up here of forward-thinking individuals. And, and, and for that reason, we know that it's necessary to take a little bit of time to make that decision. So in all respect, uh, I'm glad that we thought about it that way. And, uh, hope that, uh, we come back with the, the decision that we all feel comfortable that it was the right decision.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Um, I don't have much to say. I just wanted to give you a, a brief update. I did meet with, uh, Cabrera and his, uh, chief of staff about certain items that I wanted to bring to the table. Um, nothing out of their job scope. That's not their responsibility. So I think the denial was not going to be easy. Um, some of the items that I spoke to him and his staff about was capital improvement on our county properties. Especially Northwest Thirty-Sixth Street. I see a lot of neighboring communities getting these beautiful facelifts. Their streets are being repaved. Their medians are, have this beautiful landscaping. So right now I have a community neighbor envy because I want to look just as good. So I told them if we can, you know, if we can get, um, looking into that to see what we're doing. Because at the end of the day, we're not receiving those bedtacks, which is fine, or we're not receiving all of it, but they do have a due diligence to our community to take care of our, our roads and our streets and stuff like that. And to reinvest with that bedtack. Um, whether it be tourism or commercial or whatever it is, but they need to reinvest where it's, and I think we're, we're very overdue on that, um, topic. Another thing I addressed was, um, there's a lot of graffiti. Not necessarily within our city, but we have graffiti on the bus stops. We have graffiti when I'm going to leave my house and you, you know, the North, North Royal Puenciana side, you're looking over to Hialeah, and yes, it's on the Hialeah side, but I see it. So even though it's on Hialeah, I think we have to help each other. If, if, if Hialeah is not going to reach out to the commissioner's office for the cleanup, then I will. So I went ahead and I did that.
Yeah, on the canal. That's actually F dot.
Oh, is it F dot? So they're going to be reaching out.
To F dot about that for a while now to get them to pressure clean it and clean it.
So I had them, I need them to reach out to the authorities to get our, our cities cleaned up. It's their responsibility. Um.
And graffiti on the bus stops, I'm sorry. Graffiti on the bus stops, uh, eastbound on Thirty-Sixth Street is the county, right? Or is that also F done?
Uh, the bus stops are kind of, how does that work?
Tommy was a county.
Or county.
That's county, right? So yeah, so we probably, I think that's a good point. We need to approach all the relevant stakeholders.
I can tell you with graffiti, it needs to be cleaned up the minute it's seen. So if we see it, and again, that's one of the things our community, any of us, you know, as soon as we see it, let Tammy know, um, us, but our community, we have that new app that we put into the budget last year, see, fix, click, still click, see, click, fix. It's an app. I ask everyone in our community, please download it on your phone. It means that anything you see in the city, that's a concern. You know, whether it's garbage, whether it's graffiti, whether it's a broken stop sign, whether it's, you're just wondering, you know, why this, you know, or tree that needs trimming, anything, take a picture of it. You, you click it, you send it to, it will automatically, the app will automatically send it to the correct department in my, uh, Miami Springs. And what's really good about that is you'll get back, um, status update. It's recorded, it goes to that department, it's noticed with a photo, and you're going to get back status update as the work is in progress as to, and there are times then it's not our property. It belongs to the county or its state or, you know, so you'll get that back saying we've reported it to someone, you know, to them. It's not something we can fix, but, um, we have to all be the eyes and ears of, for the city. It's, you know, if you see something, don't assume why isn't it taken care of? Assume that we don't know about it. If you send it to us and we already know about it and there's a work order or, you know, we're in the process of ordering parts for it or whatever, we'll let, you know, you'll find out. But just assume that we don't know and that you're the first person reporting it. Um, and that's really, you know, one of the ways that we can, um, keep our city, um, not just maintained, but beautiful, beautiful if we're all, you know, doing our part with that.
They're also going to look into, um, certain, I guess, uh, committees. One that was mentioned was the cultural affairs committee. Cause I did tell them we were looking for funding for these monuments for our founder. So they're going to be helping us with that. So I'm just going to be following up this week with, with Christina. Um, we haven't been able to touch base, but I want to see where, where we're at, you know, based on the discussion that we had. Um, especially that we're trying to clean up Thirty-Sixth Street. I think it's really important to make our streets look good. I mean, I know it's, but everything is still there. But I think the approach to coming into Miami Springs from the airport is very important. It just starts setting up presence of, okay, this is starting to be cleaned up, right? So starting from there. Um, I just want to touch, I mean, I know it's a little bit of a touchy situation. I'm a resident, I'm a business owner. Um, I don't have my office here. I do, I do sympathize with, uh, some residents and business owners that came out today to discuss, you know, how they want to, you know, continue to be a part of our community service, our residents. Um, there's been a lot of back and forth. I'm here for the residents, right? So, you know, and all of us are here for the residents and decisions that we make, or the changes that we do. I mean, we've addressed how many ordinances since we, why I came into office, we've done so many changes because of the pulse of the community, right? So, um, I, I was taken aback by the ordinance that's put in place for the town center. I understand that that was put together for a specific use. I understand that completely. And maybe at the time, that's what the intention was. And maybe that's what's being executed. Okay. Um, but I don't want to close our doors so tight for other opportunities for businesses to excel within our community because we do need pediatricians. We do need vets. I know all of us up here feel that way, but sometimes we're here to enforce, um, rules and regulations and ordinances for the purposes that they were supposed to be fulfilled. So what I'm saying here is I want to, um, again, it's touchy. We're not here, you know, let's clear the air. We're not here for the developer. The developer can go ahead and do whatever he needs to do to close up shop because you know, he's, he's fulfilled the mission. What we're here to do is, okay, we have this situation.
The Councilwoman.
No, 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 I know. I'm closing out.
Okay. Because I, I think this is going to be an agenda item or something, you know, I'm saying.
There's nothing.
Well, that's what I'm saying. If you want to expand and have a discussion on it, that's fine, but if.
I just want to show respect to the residents that came out and verbalize their concerns. I will be looking into certain things. I don't know exactly what, what can be done here, but I don't like to close the doors on my residents. Um, so I'll leave it at that. Let me, let me think this through. Let me speak with, with Roger. Um, and because I know that we, we have a series of things going on there, but I just want to recognize and I, I know that we all feel, we're, we're recognizing the situation. We're not ignoring it. And that's what I wanted to really bring out because it's been so stressful. And I just wanted to, um, recognize that, that the awareness is there. And us as a council, we we have rules, right? Now, they can be changed based on the pulse of the community, right? And the, the need for that change. Um, so that, that's it. That's all I wanted to say. I wanted to say thank you, Tammy, to all the candidates that came out today. Those one-on-ones were super long, but very, very well, uh, very needed. Um, and that's it. Thank you to my colleagues for my very long closeout here. And, um, let's see.
All right.
Is it that, uh, I'm not going to take his line. Go ahead.
All right. Councilman Fahed.
Okay. Um, all right. So, uh, for the, for the benefit of the, of the residents, right? Have, has the city put anything, uh, are, are the, because there's a website right now where, where residents can go to and see bios of all the candidates for city manager and their resumes. Has the city put anything out?
Uh, we would have, I don't, we'd have to ask our human resources director, but I don't. Uh, we would have, I don't, we'd have to ask our human resources director, but I don't believe so.
Can we, can we just uh? Yeah, because I I feel like if if we're taking this time and we want to allow, I I know that in the, I looked in the Gazette today and there's nothing in there, so maybe we can put something out.
Let's ask um and uh Roger, I don't know, Tammy, you're one of the candidates. You can, I I can. Bill Collins and put something together with, I don't know if we want to get the whole packet, you know, I mean, we each have really think, but something, their resume.
Right, it's already online, right? But I I it wouldn't be bad for us to also put it, put it out there.
Not on the agenda, the resumes aren't on today's agenda, right, as attachments.
I don't think, have we had, which which agenda wa was that on?
No, I'm saying, is it on today's?
It's not on today's, but has it have the resumes and bios been put on any agenda?
No, because today's the first time.
Request.
All right, well. I don't, I don't think a website should be beating us to that punch.
Um, ask Bill to put I I um to put something on.
Like a brief uh.
Yeah, and possibly, you know, the resumes. I think the resume is the best thing as part of the city. These are the four candidates that the the city council interviewed and put it on social media, the the resumes, okay?
Okay, uh, thank you. Uh, also, quick question that uh now, I'll I'll ask this question offline. Um, can I please propose that uh we give the two hundred and fifty dollars to Girl Scout Troop Twenty-five Sixty-four to support them in their uh their trip that they're taking, is that their consensus?
Is everyone okay with that? All we need is a consensus, I don't think. Uh, do we take a vote for that?
I think we can do consensus.
Consensus, okay, if that's out of the fund that we had said, you know, that we have set aside, a set aside for for um public civic clubs and stuff.
Okay, that's that's all I've got. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, thank you, Councilman Vasquez.
Well, if I had to one of my points, so that's one thing less that I have to raise about the Girl Scouts. Um, the only other thing that I want to say is that, you know, and it's part of what I said earlier, just expand a little bit, I want to say earlier uh to uh Senator Avila and and Representative Rizzo about the appropriation that we received from the state and how we're moving along. Now with some more solid planning in terms of of revising the design and working with the the city manager to to get all the other things that we have to get in line in terms of how to um utilize that appropriation. And, you know, having said that, I wanted to thank the city, especially um city manager's office, particularly Public Works, uh because they have, they they house. I don't know how many bricks it is right now, uh Councilman Best, but they have all the folks that have bought um bricks. Uh, those are being housed by Public Works and I believe one of the banks, uh one of the benches. So i i it's it's uh it's been a really solid support for the War Memorial Committee. Now we're shifting gears, but I want to thank the staff, particularly Public Works for that. So thank you very much, let uh, yeah, yeah, absolutely. And and um, so I guess the really good news is, uh, you could tell is that uh we can see a a light at the end of the tunnel when those bricks will be taken uh to the site and and uh and placed where they need to be placed and and also on the bench. So thank you, and also um that William had put in place uh supporting our efforts. If people had checks to drop off for the bricks, right, so and 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 Councilman Best is the treasurer of the group. So we we've been, this has all been really important, but they've been able to do this a lot with the support we got from the city, so.
Councilman is also the American Re Legion poster, one of those, I know Richard Block, Virginia Gardens, but the American, one of the
Yeah, yeah, members of the American Legion, yes, yes, including our 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 uh esteemed councilman from our sister city, Richard Block, who's been really a driving force of this. And so um, uh but uh, but it's much appreciated. I feel confident that we can put in a a timeline and hopefully in a future meeting to be able to give you an update on that timeline. But uh the support of the city has been dispensable in 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 getting this project off the ground. So thank you very much. That's all I got.
Thank you, Councilman, and I and I was going to congratulate you and I see our former councilman Bob Best in the audience for the two of you, um, starting with this project and, you know, and and through the city all last year, working so hard for the War Memorial to get it in, it's um, we're going to be um, I think, the only city in in Miami Dade County that is going to have such a lovely um showcase for um to honor our um those that have served in the military. And it's well over deep and and it's just a perfect fitting in with, you know, Curtis Parkway and everything else that we have in the city of exploring the city, of walking, riding bikes and, you know, and a lot of things to explore. So to both of you, though, along with the others that Councilman Santin mentioned, you worked really hard for this and you made it happen. You got the appropriations. The only appropriation we didn't get from the state um was the uh canal bank reinforcement. Um, that's a really important resiliency uh uh project that we need to get done. And and we're going to rework it after speaking with our senator and our representative of bringing it up again. Um, we initially started it a few years back because we got partial money for it, but it hasn't been approved the last few years. And um it needs to get done because our canal banks, that's where the flood control is and the roadways will eventually erode if we don't have the reinforcement on those canal banks. So, you know, it's it's something that seems not that important. It's it's really vital um to our resiliency. And with that said, I just wanted to thank everyone for um, you know, the interview process. I know it took a long time out of the day and we have a lot to think about, but I think we have four good candidates and we'll make a really good decision. Um, I did want to extend um just warm wishes to Yvonne Schoenberger. Most of you know her, she and her husband Frank are like staples in Miami Springs with Historic Preservation Board and the Historical Society and all, and and she's been ill for several months now. So just to extend thoughts, um, you know, our best wishes to um to her family, to her, her, to get better and to her family who's helping taking care of her and also to um uh Merle Klein in the Women's Club that um is also having some health issues and just a really, really dedicated volunteer in the city and and does so much um through that civic club. So with that said, happy Fourth of July to everyone. Um, enjoy the parade. Everything is, we're not having the fireworks, but we're still having the parade, the the celebration at the Aquatic Center.
Car show coming up.
Car show, it's going to be a a lot of fun. Stay off the golf course. Meeting is adjourned.
Thank you, Mayor.